Good evening. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting Monday, June 15, 2015. The Board has just returned from Executive Session. We started the Executive Session, or before the Executive Session, with our Pledge of Allegiance. So we're going to now move to one of our first two proclamations. Ms. Moffett, will you please read the first proclamation?
Whereas Marjorie S. Freeman, a lifelong resident of Falmouth, born in her home in North Falmouth on June 21, 1950, will be celebrating her 100th birthday on June 21, 2015. Whereas, Marjorie has always loved dancing, and at age 12, won first prize at the Elizabeth Theatre, Dancing the Charleston. She worked at Sheen's Bakery and Malcolm's Clothing Store on Main Street. She graduated from high school, and on May 27, 1937, she married Dana Freeman and had three sons. Whereas Marjorie has always been an active member of the community, she collected the census for both the state and the town, and she was the warden of Precinct 5. She was an active participant in the Grange Hall in North Falmouth and the North Falmouth Village Association. Whereas, Marjorie advocated for the building of the Falmouth Hospital, securing funds to make it a reality. She served on the Board of Directors for the Barnstable County Fair, and she started their first souvenir shop. Whereas, Marjorie continues to be a parishioner at St. Elizabeth Asceton in North Falmouth, and she has eight grandchildren, 11 great-grandchildren, and one great-great-granddaughter. Now therefore, the Board of Selectmen of Falmouth do hereby proclaim Sunday, June 21, as Marjorie S. Freeman Day. In witness thereof, we, Doug Jones, Susan Moran, Mary Pat Flynn, Rebecca Moffett, and Samuel Patterson, have hereunto set our hand and caused the great seal of the Town of Falmouth to be affixed on this 15th day of June, 2015.
Take that as a motion. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? Unanimous? The ayes have it? Congratulations. And thank you for everything you've done for the Town of Falmouth.
Congratulations. Great idea, Jake. The whole room is filled with Freemans.
Would all the Freeman family stand, maybe, in front of us and get a picture?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Turn and face the audience.
Right. If you could.
Don't worry about getting us in it. Mostly to see you. Because I'll for the people at home to see how many people have shown up.
If you can, because you want to get the seal in the picture, right?
It's incredible.
It's pretty wide.
Is that all there is?
Thank you for saying hi. Appreciate it. Great job.
Take care. Pleasure.
Nice to meet you.
You're very welcome. We're all bosses, yes. Good to see you too.
Take care.
You're welcome. Thank you for being here.
Hasn't it done so many years? Hasn't it?
Congratulations.
You got settled now?
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Sir, thanks for being with us.
I know, it has been a long time, hasn't it? Congratulations.
I'm so impressed. Your family is incredible.
Yeah.
My issue was raised by Helen.
We were going to ask you to the Charleston for us tonight. I'll do that.
Past including you.
That's acceptable then.
Presuming.
Of course she would.
Congratulations. Happy birthday. So nice to meet you. Thank you. Thank you, you too.
So you had to be thankful.
I'll say.
Okay, our next item on our agenda is a proclamation for the 300 Committee. Ms. Moran?
Yes. Whereas, the 300 Committee Land Trust was formed in 1985 and successfully met its first goal of permanently protecting 300 acres in celebration of the Town's 300th anniversary in 1986. Whereas, the 300 Committee Land Trust has continued its important land preservation work since its founding, and this year celebrates 30 years of land protection and more than 2,300 acres preserved. Whereas, the 300 Committee Land Trust has continuously fulfilled its mission by permanently preserving land for open space, recreation, habitat, and water resource protection, and natural beauty. Whereas, the 300 Committee Land Trust serves as a valuable resource, providing information of all of Falmouth's open spaces to residents, pardon me, to residents and visitors, and providing expertise to property owners wishing to preserve their land. Whereas, the 300 Committee Land Trust outreach and stewardship activities engage a broad range of participants to foster a shared appreciation of land conservation in Falmouth across generations. Whereas, the 300 Committee Land Trust and the Town of Falmouth have enjoyed a strong cooperative working relationship. Whereas, the 300 Committee Land Trust, by providing important open space in all of Falmouth's villages, contributes significantly to our community character and quality of life. Now therefore, the Board of Selectmen of Falmouth must hereby proclaim Thursday, July 9, 2015, as the 300 Committee Day. In witness whereof, we, Doug Jones, Susan Moran, Mary Pat Flynn, Rebecca Moffett, and Samuel Patterson, have hereunto set our hand and caused the great seal of the Town of Falmouth to be affixed on this 15th day of June, 2015.
Take that as a motion. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? Unanimous? The ayes have it? Congratulations. And thank you for everything you've done for the Town of Falmouth.
Congratulations. Great idea, Jake. The whole room is filled with Freemans.
Would all the Freeman family stand, maybe, in front of us and get a picture?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Turn and face the audience.
Right. If you could.
Don't worry about getting us in it. Just. Mostly to see you. Because I'll for the people at home to see how many people have shown up.
If you can, because you want to get the seal in the picture, right?
Sure. Sure.
It's incredible. It's great. I love it. It's a very nice job. Very good job. It's incredible. I know, we see the seal. We got it. Move in. I feel like it's, I think, move in. It is pretty wide. Is that all there is? I thought there were tons more.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for saying hi. Appreciate it. Great job. It's our pleasure.
Take care. Pleasure.
Truly a pleasure. Nice to meet you.
You're very welcome. You're all bosses, yes. Good to see you too. But all things very nice.
Take care.
Thank you. Ever use the call of Spanx? We see you too.
You're welcome. Thank you for being here.
Hasn't it done so many years? Hasn't it? Congratulations. I remember that. I sure do. Putting some papers together is believing. It's a lot of passion.
Congratulations. Sign, please. Give me the audience. You got settled now? Let's go.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
I told you you could pass her home.
Sir, thanks for being with us.
I know, it has been a long time, hasn't it? Congratulations. Yeah, it's wonderful. I'm so impressed. Your family is incredible. Yeah, for good reason. Great accomplishments.
We were going to ask you to the Charleston for us tonight. I'll do that. Okay, well, that's acceptable then. Presuming.
Or she would.
Congratulations. Happy birthday. So nice to meet you. Thank you. Thank you, you too.
So you had to be thankful. Thank you.
I'll say. Okay, our next item on our agenda is a proclamation for the 300 Committee. Ms. Moran?
Yes. Whereas, the 300 Committee Land Trust was formed in 1985 and successfully met its first goal of permanently protecting 300 acres in celebration of the Town's 300th anniversary in 1986. Whereas, the 300 Committee Land Trust has continued its important land preservation work since its founding, and this year celebrates 30 years of land protection and more than 2,300 acres preserved. Whereas, the 300 Committee Land Trust has continuously fulfilled its mission by permanently preserving land for open space, recreation, habitat, and water resource protection, and natural beauty. Whereas, the 300 Committee Land Trust serves as a valuable resource, providing information of all of Falmouth's open spaces to residents, pardon me, to residents and visitors, and providing expertise to property owners wishing to preserve their land. Whereas, the 300 Committee Land Trust outreach and stewardship activities engage a broad range of participants to foster a shared appreciation of land conservation in Falmouth across generations. Whereas, the 300 Committee Land Trust and the Town of Falmouth have enjoyed a strong cooperative working relationship. Whereas, the 300 Committee Land Trust, by providing important open space in all of Falmouth's villages, contributes significantly to our community character and quality of life. Now therefore, the Board of Selectmen of Falmouth must hereby proclaim Thursday, July 9, 2015, as the 300 Committee Day. In witness whereof, we, Doug Jones, Susan Moran, Mary Pat Flynn, Rebecca Moffett, and Samuel Patterson, have hereunto set our hand and caused the great seal of the Town of Falmouth to be affixed on this 15th day of June, 2015.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? None? It's unanimous.
Credible accomplishments.
Next item on our agenda are announcements. Do we have any announcements from the members of the Board of Town Manager's Office? Next, we have public comment. If there's anyone who'd like to make comments on something that is not on our agenda, and please keep your comments to about two minutes.
Nancy Hayward, West Falmouth, Precinct 5. This is a rather dull comment after those two wonderful proclamations. I'm playing a bit the town crier. I went to the Community Preservation Committee, CPC, meeting on the 11th, and I just want to state for the selectmen and the public that there is another CPC, Community Preservation Committee, meeting at 7:00 PM on Thursday, the 18th. This did not get in the newspaper, and so I am making this announcement. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Also, for the public, Thursday at 1:00 and at 6:00 at the library, there is the site review for the senior staff. Thank you.
Any other? Yes?
Mark Fineran, Precinct 6. Couple of weeks ago, there was a meeting at T-Ticket School relative to the sewer-ing. It was rather poorly run. The people inside the building couldn't hear questions from the other people. It was supposedly something to do with FCTV. But I haven't seen it televised yet. But there were some things that were said that weren't correct. I pointed them out, but they weren't really addressed, and I'm going to point them out again. Mr. Turkington stated that we would only sewer where alternatives didn't work, wouldn't work. They never were given a chance to work. Also, he said the MEP stated we needed to sewer 100% of Little Pond. It actually did. But it further stated that if we opened up Little Pond, we could save 30% of the sewer-ing. That's before any of the other alternatives that we're supposed to consider, but don't. He also said every drop of sewer water from the sewer project goes into Little Pond. It's absolutely untrue. Part of sewer project is in Falmouth Heights, and it goes directly into the sound. The dredging they just did on the opening of Little Pond was basically a joke. Thousands of yards need to be taken out of there. That was taken out of, in the summary of actions with no comment, that was taken out of Article 17, which is strictly for design. I believe that would be illegal. There was a man there that complained that he knew nothing of the alternatives. And there was also a few people there from the Falmouth Heights Mayor Vista Association who heard during my town meeting presentation that they were part of a survey that said the people of Little Pond didn't want the inlet opening done. Upon investigation, he found out, upon pushing the people in the sewer committee, that there were only two people from Mayor Vista and the Heights at that meeting, which was supposedly impetus beside behind us spending an extra $25 million.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Turkington.
This is wrong. I'm just pointing it out again.
Any other one? I'm coming. Next item on our agenda. Approved minutes of the meetings. June 1, 2015, public session?
I'm of approval of the minutes of June 1. Did you say Executive Session?
Nope. Public session.
For public session.
Second. Mr. Patterson?
I offered a number of corrections. I turned them over to Jennifer. I don't know, Jennifer, do you want to read them since I don't have them in front of me? I'm just, these are minor, but some of them are.
So there was page 1, changed Mr. to Ms.
Moran, yep.
And then there's another question mark. And page 3, under number 8, add Senate, sort of the same state Senate. And state match above the allocated to be added, and delete from in charge. And then next line, somebody, the lead contributed, and then add match, and then delete, I'm sorry, add 1%, and delete the 100%, and now they want to contribute about 8% back to the tax. Page 3 at the bottom, the second line at the bottom, on June 28, leave pending, add contingent on conservation. On page 6, you wait down, so the lead are from West Coast and add the extra 5%.
We have those amendments. A motion, a second to approve? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? None? The Executive Session minutes we are going to hold, we have a few little corrections we need to do those, and then we'll bring those back next week. Want to, since I did mention about our future meetings, I did want to announce that the Betterment Meeting for the Little Pond Sewer Area is currently scheduled to be on July 13. We had originally hoped we would be able to do that at the end of this month, but it now is scheduled to be July 13. That will be our major agenda item for that meeting, and we just want to start getting the word out there as soon as we can. Eventually, there will be many people who may come to that. We may even be looking at an alternative location and potentially have it in Morse Pond School, because we are expecting to have a good turnout, and certainly hope to have people there to be able to get the information that they might want about that. Under summary of actions, we have some special one-day liquor licenses. First, for the Food Truck Festival of America, Cape Cod Fairgrounds, on Saturday, August 29, 2015. And also for the Cape Cod Canal Regional Chamber of Commerce Scarlet Festival, on Cape Fairgrounds, on Friday, September 18, Saturday, September 19, and Sunday, September 20.
I'm of approval of both events. As printed.
Okay, a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? None? The ayes have it. Next, under administrative orders, I'm going to read the list. If you have an item you'd like to hold, please state. The first is affordable housing, mass housing referral for the village at Old Main, 41 Old Main Road, North Falmouth. Mr. Chairman, there'll be a presentation on that. Okay, so we'll hold that. Thank you. Second is to approve payment from the Beach Department donation account in the amount of $723.94 to MR Sewers Company for plantings and the surf drive window boxes. Third is accept the scoreboard donation for the South Road Race, South Commodores. I would like to hold that. Fourth is approve payment of $220,000 for the Affordable Housing Fund, the Falmouth Housing Corp., for the NoTantico Awards Project.
I'd like to hold that.
Okay, number five is approve the grant agreement with the Falmouth Housing Trust, Inc., the trust, $120,000 for the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund, to develop three affordable single-family homes at property 761 T-Ticket Highway at the corner of St. Marks Road. And number six is to motion to authorize the town manager to submit the statement of interest to the EPA on behalf of the Town of Falmouth. What does that mean? Is it a question? Okay, you'll hold that? Yeah. So we have number two, the surf drive window boxes, and number five, the St. Marks Agreement with Falmouth Housing Trust that were not held.
Motion to approve?
Second. So a motion to approve those two items, two and five. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? None? The ayes have it. First, we have a presentation on affordable housing, the mass housing referral, village at Old Main Road, mid-Old Main, 41 Old Main Road.
Thank you, Mrs. Jen. My name is Paul Glenn. I represent Mike Solimando. He's the builder and developer, and this is for affordable housing at 41 Old Main Road. We have engineering plans, we have architectural plans, and as this board knows, we'll be submitting all that to the Board of Appeals at some point. Some of the, and it's already been submitted to the Board here, some of those things might change by the time we actually submit to the Board of Appeals. For instance, we met with the Historical District Commission last week and had a very good conversation with them. They made, every suggestion they made just about, Mike was agreeable to, and his architect has already prepared some revisions to the building, and the engineer will be preparing some revisions to the site plan also. And I'm not sure whether you want the full presentation or not. A full presentation would probably take, we don't have the engineer and architect here tonight. It would take a considerable amount of time, and it'd probably take two meetings of the Board of Appeals to do it. But we do have plans if you do want to. You seem like you would like to see the plans for, no? Yes?
I don't want to interrupt too quick.
Members of the Board, do you have any specific questions? I think Ms. Harper's going to have some.
Do you have a specific question? The current house, is that going to remain on the property?
The current house will remain on the property. It'll be an affordable home for, could be a large family. Yes, yeah.
So that will be the front that most people see from Old Main?
Right. And nothing will be in front of that. There were a couple of parking spaces that were originally for that because there's no real front door there. There's no real way to get to the front door. It's a long house. But Mr. Solimando agreed to remove the two parking spaces from the front yard, so the appearance from Main Road won't be changed really in that regard. I did want to say one thing.
we need to do those, and then we'll bring those back next week. Want to, since I did mention about our future meetings, I did want to announce that the Betterment Meeting for the Little Pond Sewer Area is currently scheduled to be on July 13th. We had originally hoped we would be able to do that at the end of this month, but it now is scheduled to be July 13th. That will be our major agenda item for that meeting, and we just want to start getting the word out there as soon as we can. Eventually, there will be many people who may come to that. We may even be looking at an alternative location and potentially have it in Morse Pond School because we are expecting to have a good turnout and certainly hope to have people there to be able to get the information that they might want about that. Under summary of actions, we have some special one-day liquor licenses. First, for the Food Truck Festival of America, Cape Cod Fairgrounds on Saturday, August 29th, 2015. And also for the Cape Cod Canal Regional Chamber of Commerce Scarlet Festival on Cape Fairgrounds on Friday, September 18th, Saturday, September 19th, and Sunday, September 20th.
I move approval of both events as printed.
Motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. The ayes have it. Next, under administrative orders, I'm going to read the list. If you have an item you'd like to hold, please state. The first is affordable housing, Mass Housing Referral for the Village at Old Main, 41 Old Main Road, North Falmouth.
Mr. Chairman, there'll be a presentation on that.
Okay, so we'll hold that.
Thank you.
Second is to approve payment from the Beach Department donation account in the amount of $723.94 to MR Sewers Company for plantings and the surf drive window boxes. Third is accept the scoreboard donation for the South Road Race, South Commodores. I would like to hold that. Fourth is to approve payment of $220,000 for the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund, the Falmouth Housing Corp., for the NoTantico Awards Project.
I'd like to hold that.
Okay. Number five is approve the grant agreement with the Falmouth Housing Trust, Inc., the granting, the trust $120,000 for the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund to develop three affordable single-family homes at property 761 T-Ticket Highway at the corner of St. Marks Road. And number six is to motion to authorize the town manager to submit the statement of interest to the EPA on behalf of the Town of Falmouth.
What does that mean?
Is there a question?
Hold that.
Okay, you'll hold that?
Yeah.
Okay. So we have number two, the surf drive window boxes. And number five, the St. Marks Agreement with Falmouth Housing Trust, that were not held.
Motion to approve.
Second. So motion to approve those two items, two and five. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. The ayes have it. First, we have a presentation on affordable housing for the Mass Housing Referral, Village at Old Main Road, at Old Main, 41 Old Main Road.
Thank you, Mrs. Jen.
My name is Paul Glenn. I represent Mike Solimando. He's the builder and developer, and this is for affordable housing at 41 Old Main Road. We have engineering plans, we have architectural plans, and as this board knows, we'll be submitting all that to the Board of Appeals at some point. Some of the, and it's already been submitted to, to the board here. Some of those things might change by the time we actually submit to the Board of Appeals. For instance, we met with the Historical District Commission last week and had a very good conversation with them. They made, every suggestion they made just about, Mike was agreeable to, and his, and his architect has already prepared some revisions to the building, and the engineer will be preparing some, some revisions to the site plan also. And I'm not sure whether you want the full presentation or not. A full presentation would probably take, we don't have the engineer and architect here tonight. It would take a considerable amount of time, it'd probably take two meetings of the Board of Appeals to do it. But we do have plans if you, if you do want to. You seem like you would like to see the plans for, no? Yes?
I don't want to interrupt too quick.
Members of the board, do you have any specific questions? I think Ms. Harper's going to have some.
Do you have a specific question? The current house, is that going to remain on the property?
The current house will remain on the property. It'll be an affordable home for, could be a large family. Yes, yeah.
That, that will be the front that most people see from Old Main.
Right. And nothing will be in front of that. There were a couple of parking spaces that were originally for that because there's no real front door there. There's no real way to get to the front door. It's a long house. But Mr. Solimando agreed to remove the two parking spaces from the front yard, so the appearance from Main Road won't be changed really in that regard. I did want to say one thing. I, I thought the emphasis tonight would be on Mr. Solimando. He's here tonight and he's very proud of his reputation. He's done work with affordable housing before all over the state. We met up at Mass Housing a couple of times to talk with them, and they check into his qualifications, and he comes out as having a very positive reputation with them and the work that they've done. And today, we met at the site with the state and the town planner there also. And Mrs. Solimando is here, happy to talk about anything like tonight to where I am with it, yeah.
It'd be helpful to set the stage a little bit for the board. This sitting board hasn't sat through a comprehensive permit application as of yet with this full complement that we have here. Where we are in the process is one, welcome Mr. Solimando to Falmouth. It's the first project you've done in our community. The way that Falmouth has handled this process is that this is a referral from Mass Housing. Mass Housing will evaluate the project, the credentials of the applicant, the development pro forma, all of the issues that lead into the actual application to the zoning board of appeals. Mass Housing asks this board for its referral. It's the first time that the project is sort of made public to the community, and you're, this is at the highest level of review. So you generally want to know the location, the number of units, just a little, little flavor of the project, and then you may raise any concerns or fine comments that you may have about the development to Mass Housing, and then Mass Housing will determine whether the project rises to the level of meeting the qualifications to apply to the zoning board of appeals. If this board then feels that there are issues that they, that the community feels the zoning board of appeals should address, you could take those up again. This is really an inaugural process. It's the beginning.
Any other question? Sam?
Yeah, I do have a question. It has to do with the affordable units. Should those turn over, be rented out? How is the town assured that in fact they will remain affordable and not become market-rate units?
I, I think you'd rather me into that one, right? So, so the town, through the Board of Appeals and the state, will both require that there be a deed restriction in perpetuity. Normally, restrictions expire after 30 years on real estate, but there's a special statute for open space and for affordable housing, that if you file the restriction with the deed, it's in perpetuity. Falmouth has done a very good job of that. There are stories where people haven't done title searches properly and they've sold affordable units through the market. So that's something that happened 10 years ago, and both the state and the towns now are much more diligent in enforcing that. They're, they're going to make sure, the Board of Appeals will make sure that we have submitted to them the deed restriction that will go on the affordable units.
And will there be, is it administrator, a manager of that, okay with the terminology?
Yeah. Project administrator. So you can't just, anybody just can't come in and file a comprehensive permit with the Board of Appeals. You have to have your standing letter, it'd be what I'd call it, from the state. It just says, the, the standing letter doesn't say you should approve it, but it just says that we have screened the applicant for our particular program, and he meets all the, all the requirements of that.
And my question's about the for, keeping it affordable. Who will be responsible for me?
Will be, all right. So Mass Housing, Mass Housing and the Board of Appeals will both, will both be enforcing that. Mass Housing does, you know, realistically, after it's all approved, five years later, they're not monitoring that every, every day. It's really the, the lawyers that do the title searches every time really have to monitor. They can't miss that, you know, that's a, like-
Because most affordable housings are now having a monitoring agent who is assigned to be the one, and maybe it's the Board of Selectmen, maybe it's the Housing Trust, but I would hope that would be-
So the monitoring agent will probably be working with Housing Assistance Corp. You know, first, we wanted to, to, to go through them. They're going to be, Housing Assistance Corp. will, they act like a broker in a sense. They, they have a lottery and they qualify all of the potential applicants for the affordable homes. And then afterwards, any resales, they would qualify them. But you know, that isn't the full answer. They can't monitor themselves. So we have to get somebody else. The last time it was a group in Plymouth County. So this is all, and you know, the developer pays for all this. You know, the-
I was going to say, they actually get a fee at the focus commission.
Can I add on the deed rider? All notifications go to the Department of Housing and Community Development, the monitoring agent and the Board of Selectmen. Every refinance that's, that's identified, every transfer of ownership comes through the town manager's office. It is a significant level of effort for the town to manage all of those. It's, it's welcome, it's part of the goals of the town, but there is a lot of responsibility on both the developer and the town in accepting these types of projects.
Could you explain to me the difference between a 40B and affordable housing?
Well, 40B is the Massachusetts statute. That's, it's just Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 40B. That's what it, so that, that's what it refers to. And that would be the, the broad way of doing it. I think affordable housing is just the vernacular that we use instead of the, the legal term, you know, affordable housing. Under 40B, you can use any state or federal program to apply to them to get your standing letter to go to the Board of Appeals. And there are a lot of different programs. There, there are a lot of, there are a lot of programs, both federal and state. I'm familiar with a lot of them, but there are dozens more that are the initials and federal things like that. So there are a lot of programs. But the program we're going with here, it's, they're all affordable. You'd call this workforce housing. This is, the people that buy these affordable homes are going to be qualified by private lenders, just like any other borrower would, before they can buy the, buy the affordable house. They don't have to have the income that you would to pay for a substantially priced house. These will be going somewhere over 150, under 180, depending upon the interest rates and, and the condo fees and a lot of other factors that go into it there.
I'm just going to have us take a step back, and maybe Mr. Solimando could just give us a two or three minute overview as to what the project is, exactly the property, just for the public that's out there knows what we're talking about. There's some places I read here where it's talking about eight units, other places talking about six and a one unit. So maybe, Mr. Solimando, if you could just take the mic, give us a very brief description of what it is you want to do.
What, what we're planning to do is, well, the existing home is a Cape, and, and it's going to stay right there on Main Street. I'm going to duplicate another single-family home that will sit beside it, and then there'll be a center driveway going down. So actually, from the road, from Main Street, you'll only see two single-family homes in a Cape-style, and we would kind of change them up a little bit from what, if we have, if you have the plan now to coincide with what we heard from the Historical Commission. So, but in the back, there are going to be three duplexes. So total of eight units, there'll be three duplexes, one of a total of six units. One of those units in the back, okay, will be an affordable, okay? And then there'll be, then there'll be five market-rate units. And then out of the two single-family homes that sit in the street, okay, one will be an affordable and the other one will be a market. So we have a, a good cross-section of what we're building, and we're making part of it affordable and part of it a market rate.
The current plan is that the renovation house will be the affordable one-
That's correct.
And the new one will be the market rate.
Yes, it will.
Okay. Great, thank you. I just want to make sure I understood.
Sure. But you won't see the others from the street? Because I'll be-
And just quickly, what is the area of land that you're covering and how many parking spaces? And I think I understand they'll be behind the houses on the street, if that's correct.
Well, we have parking space for each bedroom, and then, and for each unit, there's, there's a guest parking space as well.
Thank you.
Rebecca?
So you will have five market price, and you will have two affordable?
Correct.
Six market.
I'm sorry.
Is it six market, three duplexes?
Six, six market. Yes, I'm sorry. I was thinking of the duplexes.
It's six market and two affordable.
Yes, ma'am.
And the affordable are in the area of $150,000 or up to $100,000?
Yeah, around 100, 100, in between there. It's a formula that they use, taking what the income is and what, where the, what the mortgage rates are. So it's going to be in there between, probably about 158 and 180 is where it's going to be, somewhere in that neighborhood.
Any other questions?
They're all three-bedroom homes, at least two baths.
All right, entertain a motion to refer this to Mass Housing.
Some move.
Need further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Do you want to offer comments?
Excuse me?
Do you want to offer any comments or questions from the audience?
Sure. I'm not sure if that, the referrals, I think it's just the first step, and it comes back many times, but-
True.
I'm in an attempt to get as much information, and maybe for the applicant's, is there anyone who'd like to comment on this project? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is to discuss accepting a scoreboard donation from the Falmouth Road Race, Falmouth Commodores for a new scoreboard at the Gus Canty, Gov. Fuller Field. The Arnie Diamond-
Arnie Allen Diamond.
Arnie Allen Diamond. Yes, sir.
My name is Steve Costas. I'm the president of the Order Directors of the Falmouth Commodores. We appear before you this evening. I have with me also, just for point of questions perhaps, and people in support of the scoreboard request, Sandy Cooney, who is chairman of the Recreation Department, and Kathleen Burke, who is the athletic director for Falmouth High School. As, in accordance with our memorandum of understanding with the Town of Falmouth, any signage or postings of any sort that go at the field have to be approved by the board. We are requesting that the board approve a scoreboard that is being fully funded by a grant to the Falmouth Commodores by the Falmouth Road Race. That would be placed in left field at the current baseball facility. It indicates on the top, I assume you've all seen the rendering, Arnie Allen Diamond at Gov. Fuller Field, the logo of the Falmouth Commodores, the logo of Falmouth High School Clippers, and across the bottom, the Falmouth Road Race as those that sponsored the scoreboard and of course paid for it, and their logo as well. So we're here to ask permission to erect the scoreboard as you see it in front of you at the field.
And are you aware of the concern about, or the suggestion about including the Falmouth logo, the town seal?
I have, I do understand that there was a suggestion to include the seal of the Town of Falmouth. I would state that the scoreboard as it stands now makes reference to the town, well, to at least the words "Falmouth" prominently in two places. Falmouth Clippers, it's an F with the Clippers, which is the approved seal of their logo for the high school sports. I would also say that in thinking about this and looking at other signage on the site, including the two existing scoreboards, the seal of the town is not on either of those scoreboards. It's not on, and I can, if you, I'm sure you're all familiar with the signs here, but we have photographs if anybody would like to look at them. It's not on the Gus Canty Community Center sign that was donated by the Rotary, the Town of Falmouth sign out front that says, you know, Gus Canty Community Center, Police Headquarters, Artist Guild, Gov. Fuller Field, and Whizwall Field House seems to indicate pretty prominently who owns the facility and who's responsible for it. The high school scoreboards in the gymnasium don't have the town seal on them. The three scoreboards at Trotting Park, at the Falmouth Youth Baseball Field, don't have the town seal on them. So I guess I would just add that precedent doesn't seem to indicate that there's a real need for it.
Okay, well, the precedent I know does on all those signs, has those signs go to the Falmouth Rec Committee first, because they're the ones who control that and we take their recommendation. I understand it's not gone to them yet as a committee, and so-
Maybe Ms. Cooney could answer that.
Sandra Cooney, chairman of the Falmouth Recreation Committee. Just for the record, knowing that the Recreation Committee could not meet until July 8th, I sent out via email a notice to all the Recreation Committee members. I attached the grant proposal by the Falmouth Commodores with a picture of what the proposed new scoreboard would look like. I asked them to respond with any questions, concerns, or comments prior to this meeting tonight. I have five members that responded. Of the questions and concerns, one was a concern about the July installation being disruptive to the Commodores. The other was a question about whether or not they made scoreboards for multiple sports, such as football and baseball together. And both of those issues have been addressed. So the comments from the Recreation Committee members are, it sounds like a good idea, it's a great idea, it's a nice donation, sounds good to me, and the last one, it is free. What more do you want to hear? Have a nice day. So it appears to me that the Recreation Committee is in majority and total support of the donation from the Falmouth Road Race for a new scoreboard at Gov. Fuller Field. Thank you. And could I just add one thing, since I am chairman of the Recreation Committee? At the end of June, the Recreation Committee is losing two of its members due to the charter term. So if anybody is interested in being on the Recreation Committee, please come down to Town Hall and apply. Thank you.
Well, I just wanted to make a comment on the seal. You know, we talk about the town seal and where it should be and all the different places that some people would like to have it, but I think the town seal is, is a very special thing. And it goes back many, many years, and I think we should be very judicious about where we place the town seal. And I, I think it should be placed, I, I just, well, I don't want to go into where I think it should go or where I think it shouldn't go. I just think that we should be very careful and very judicious in our discussions about where we place the seal. Because it, it represents, first of all, a huge history in the Town of Falmouth, going back a long, long way. So I don't think that we should just casually say it's okay to put the seal here, or put the seal there, or wherever. I think it should be reserved for special circumstances and special prices.
If you would add just one detail in the description we've read about the powering of this, to make sure that people understand that this is not something that's going to be adding to our electric bill.
No, it's solar powered.
Any other questions or comments?
Just to make sure that there has been coordination, but one of the conditions of the grant was that the Town Parks Department is going to be removing the existing scoreboard. I know it does not have to be removed in order for this one to be installed, but I'm not sure if any, any outreach or coordination has occurred with the Parks Department.
We have spoken to them about the fact that it would be removed. It does not have to be removed prior to the installation of this scoreboard. I would also be prepared to say that we would, or perhaps Ms. Burke would like to address it, but-
Rocky Gomes from the W, I did contact him.
I can't hear you.
Go ahead and finish your-
We would be prepared to work with either Rocky Gomes or whatever it might take to facilitate that happening if they couldn't take care of it on their own.
What's our period of maintenance is there with the purchase?
I'm sorry?
Is there a warranty as to, at what point will the town have some financial obligation to maintain it?
I don't believe you'll have any. We haven't had any maintenance cost to the town for the existing scoreboard, at least within the past four years, five years in, in my tenure, and we wouldn't expect to do it, pass the town to do it now. Additionally, I would say that these scoreboards now, and if you go across the Cape League, there are several, the most recent being at Yonath Dennis. They're, like many other things today, they require very little maintenance.
Rebecca?
Could we have Karen Bissonette come and speak?
Do you have a specific question for her?
Yes.
Hi, Karen Bissonette. I'm on the, I assume you want me to speak as a member of the Road- I'm on the, I assume you want me to speak as a member of the Road Race Board of Directors?
I'm going to speak to you concerning the sign and what your opinion about having the town seal, since you're involved with this seal being donated to the town.
Actually, I got an email from Ms. Harper, and I did express my opinion about the seal. And I, truthfully, it's my personal opinion, as a Road Race member, as a professional fundraiser, and as a taxpayer, as I said in my email, that it's not appropriate for the town seal to be on the sign. You know, that we've needed a new scoreboard down there for 15 years, Ms. Burke probably, and the town has chosen not to pay for that scoreboard. And to me, you know, if the town were going to pay for the scoreboard, then the seal should be on there. So it is a private donation to the Commodores, not to the town. It is for the benefit of the Falmouth Commodores and the other baseball teams that play there, for instance, the Falmouth Clipper team and some of the Babe Ruth teams, and some of the AAU baseball teams. And the Road Race is thrilled to be able to do it. But to me, it just doesn't seem appropriate. And I think, you know, if you look at all the other signs in that area, they don't appear. And Ms. Harper and I had a, had an email discussion about that there's some confusion about sometimes if Gove Fuller Field is a town field or not. And I think that that is an issue for all of you to deal with. If there's a branding issue, then the town should be taking that on as far as, you know, signs and signage for that area. I don't think there's any confusion on who that field belongs to. Maybe in outer toner, but not so much in our town.
So when this drawing, or what we're looking at?
Yes.
It was, it never occurred to you at this point, when this was done, that the town seal would be on the scoreboard?
I had nothing to do with the design of that scoreboard. The Falmouth Commodores did. I got the rendering after it was done.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
A couple of questions. Who would do the installation of this sign?
Who would install it?
Yeah.
The company is Daktronics, so they are pretty much the standard bearer for all scoreboards these days.
So that's part of the contract you have with them?
Correct.
Okay. The control aspect of that, today, almost everything is done remotely, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Who will actually be responsible for securing that? Is that going to be the rec center, or is that going to be in the hands of the Commodores only?
No, the current control, well, the controls for the current scoreboard are locked on, in a container, in the, on the second floor of the press box. Access to that is for whomever has access to the press box, which, I mean, literally at this point, is the Commodores, the high school team, senior Babe Ruth. It's just a padlocked container that we all have keys to, that you go up and unlock and take out the controls and run the scoreboard.
Okay, thank you.
We don't, we don't control any of the keys to any of those facilities on our own.
Okay. And then my last question is, just a clarification, so will be the responsibility of the Falmouth Commodores to actually maintain, repair this sign, is that correct?
If, if that's what the town would ask and would allow, yes, which is what we've essentially done with the current one.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to take a minute, moment to clarify, just based on the understanding, and Town Council could certainly affirm this, I'm sure, that any structures that are erected on town-owned property become the property of the town. So that ultimately is the responsibility of this board, it can be assigned, as Steve is suggesting, which we greatly appreciate, Steve, the responsibility for maintenance, repairs, et cetera, because we have an excellent partnership and we see that continuing and applaud it. But I just wanted to clarify the issue of ownership, once it is erected on a municipal site, like any other structure on municipal property, that is just the way the process works under the statute.
Do you think the Finance Committee would see this as a grant that should we actually get their approval before we can accept it?
Well, I wouldn't ordain to speak for the Finance Committee, Mr. Chairman, but my sense in working with them, again, not attempting to speak for them, is they would recognize it is replacing an existing scoreboard on the facility, and given it's, the relationship we have with the Commodores, that has essentially, that partnership guarantees that it is properly maintained, I would be guardedly optimistic that Finance Committee would applaud the purchase. But again, I can't speak for them and would be happy to raise this diplomatically with them when I meet with them next.
Any other questions on the board?
Just an observation, I think that if we were to put the town seal on this scoreboard, we would be putting it in a pretty modest size, and it's not really going to stand out and probably be pretty much ignored by anybody in the stands. It doesn't strike me as going to be something that really is going to frame who owns it. It just, I don't think it's going to necessarily do what people might want it to do if it were actually put on this board. If people aren't there to look for something like that, they're there for the teams and the events that are going on, so that's, just in response to that request, it seems to me that it's, it wouldn't necessarily serve the purpose of those who want it there.
I have a motion.
I'll move to accept the scoreboard donation, Falmouth Road Race, Falmouth Commodores, with the caveat that the maintenance, as discussed, will be, there'll be an agreement between the town and the Commodores that that will, that that will occur.
Second. Is there any public comment?
I just have one quick thing to say, that this is really a tremendous example of the, how the Road Race gives back, and also a really, you know, just a wonderful partnership between the Commodores and the Road Race. And I think that everyone that worked on it, I mean, this is really a comprehensive plan that's put before us, and I think you should all be applauded.
And Recreation Committee.
Absolutely, the Recreation Committee. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you to you all.
In the discussion and in your motion, you didn't mention the seal, so you're, you're just saying that as the sign as is?
I am.
And not including the seal of Falmouth?
That's correct.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second? Is it clear to the board is what we're voting on? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? The ayes have it, unanimous. Mr. Suso, if you could talk to us a little bit about the statement of interest to the EPA, that you're asking authorization to exhibit.
Certainly, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I think we have a representative of the Water Quality Management Committee with us this evening, as well as our wastewater superintendent that could comment if I misspeak in any area. But in, in brief, EPA Region 1 is soliciting a statements of interest from selected towns on Cape Cod, obviously including Falmouth, for sites where the feasibility of constructing a permeable reactive barrier could be explored, and there is no cost to the town in such process. The EPA would fund and direct the study and hire the contractor in partnership with the Cape Cod Commission and the U.S. Geological Survey. Select selection criteria include favorable hydro-geological conditions, shallow depth to groundwater, distance from wetlands, and town-owned land if possible. Successful community, in this case Falmouth, if we are successful, would enter into an MOU with EPA and participate in the project planning. The deadline for submitting a statement of interest, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, is July 1, and this would be delivering a statement of interest if the board so confirms without a further obligation to go beyond that, if the board would prefer not to. Also, we're anticipating submitting two possible sites for consideration, West Falmouth Harbor and Acapescot Watersheds.
Questions?
Sure. Is there any visible apparatus that's needed for the study?
Good question. Virginia or Jerry, do you have any insight on it? It looks like, I think, Virginia Valiela, who's the Vice Chair of Water Quality Management Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Virginia Valiela. The short answer to your question is that they will be installing monitoring wells. Most monitoring wells are flush with the ground. There are some that have a small amount of elevation, if it's a particular type of monitoring well that has what they call multiple ports. So it might be six inches above. One of the key criteria in this application is that it be town-owned land or rights of way, and so obviously those, that would be taken into consideration.
Thank you.
This is a, this is an excellent opportunity at no cost to the town, and it allows us to advance our knowledge on one of the key alternatives that the committee has been looking at, which is the permeable reactive barrier. To do that, you need to understand the hydrology, the direction of groundwater, you need data on the quality of the groundwater, how much nitrogen there is in it, and you need to consider construction parameters, of which depth to groundwater, how close you are to the saltwater-freshwater interface. All of this work, we have begun to a degree, and your board has seen it both last year and this year, in the work we did at Acapescot. With EPA's help, we would be able to look at multiple sites, and they will be working with the Cape Cod Commission as to which sites would be, would be the best. So it seems to me a wonderful opportunity at no cost to the town. The EPA already has its contractor ready to go.
While Virginia, you're there.
Yeah.
I think it would be helpful to the public and to all of us to actually describe what a permeable reactive barrier is.
Okay.
So we can appreciate why all these hydrological studies and asking the question, how deep does it have to go, it would be helpful.
I understand. I, I wasn't going to do that unless asked. You basically are creating a situation in the groundwater that will allow for a chemical reaction. There are a number of different technologies, and the choice of technology is still down the road. In order to remove the nitrogen before it gets to the estuaries, somehow this barrier has to be installed. And it's called permeable because you basically want the groundwater to pass through the material, create the chemical reaction, which takes the nitrates that are in the, in the groundwater and lets the nitrates go off as a nitrogen gas, and most of our atmosphere is nitrogen gas, so it does not harm. There are a number of ways to install the barrier. Some are physical, dig a trench and put in wood chips, or put in iron filings. You can inject it, and you can also use other kinds of materials. They have been using a vegetable oil as it, you need a carbon source, that's the key. You need carbon, carbon atoms. So the type of technology is still a decision down the road, but in order to be able to physically put this barrier into the groundwater, you have to know how far down is the water to reach the water table. So how far down are you going to have to work? And then how thick the aquifer itself is, and then you're looking at the concentrations of nitrates. They may be low, they may be high, they may be higher near the surface and less below. So to make a decision as to the actual dimension of your permeable reactive barrier, you must do this hydrology work first. You must look at the soils. Are you drilling through sand? Are you dealing with boulders? That sort of thing has to be verified first.
Thank you.
Questions, Rebecca?
If I could speak with Mrs. Flynn and Mrs. Moran, is this a place that we went to off of Maravista a year ago when they were drilling down and taking studies in the water? We were in that field all of a sudden, I'm thinking, is this an extension of that?
Those were the other wells that we were putting in.
No. Okay. Okay. Because I'm picturing that day when we were there. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any questions?
I move for approval to authorize...
Do we have some people in the audience?
Oops, sorry.
Ms. Hayward?
Nancy Hayward, West Falmouth. My question, from what I think I heard Mrs. Valiela say, did she say this had to be placed on town-owned land? And I'm thinking of the land around West Falmouth Harbor. I come up with a lot of private land. Did, through you, Mr. Chairman, did she say it had to be placed on town-owned land?
Thank you, Nancy. The EPA has listed a number of criteria, screening criteria, that they're going to use in their review and ranking, you might say, of sites, working with the Cape Cod Commission. They prefer that it be town-owned land or town-owned rights of way, because this is on a fairly fast track. Our deadline is July 1st, they're going to decide sometime in July, they want to get into the field and do this within a year. And so they think that the issue of access and permission will be simpler if it is town-owned land. It's not an absolute requirement, but it helps elevate the sites if you can provide that.
Cam?
I'm sorry, so in the case of West Falmouth Harbor, that town-owned land might be Nashwena Road or Drive?
It would have to be, I think, that, that being the only possibility.
Okay, thanks.
Maureen Harlow-Hawks, West Falmouth. Nashwena Street, is that, are there maps going to be available to show where this reactive barrier, because I have understood that there has to be a distance to the water for these reactive barriers to work. So it would be helpful for, especially with West Falmouth Boat Club meeting coming up, that maybe on the website, they would show where this is proposed and the impact to the village. Thank you.
Yep.
We want to make clear that we're installing monitoring wells. We're not installing a permeable reactive barrier. That decision is more than a year away. This is to understand the hydrology, to see if a permeable reactive barrier would even be feasible. This is a feasibility study only for monitoring wells. So the monitoring wells, if they go in Nashwena, would be in the, in the shoulder. And whether it would be this part of the shoulder or that part of the shoulder, that's, that's a decision that would be made after the Cape Cod Commission and, and the EPA have reviewed the sites, that it may not rank high enough. You are correct that PRBs need to be at least 100 feet away from...
But it wouldn't make sense to put a well in a place you couldn't put the permeable reactive barrier in?
Correct, correct. So we shouldn't be jumping ahead yet. If you look at that application, it's got, you know, half a page of criteria for selection. And so the concerns that were raised are valid.
Jerry?
One of the, Jerry Thomas, wastewater consultant, one of the things, just to back up, we did have a consultant, C.D.M. Smith, go through an extensive evaluation, we have an executive summary. If we were going, if they were going to accept one of the sites, I would think, and Virginia might agree or disagree, that would probably be the site that we've done some extensive evaluations on, and it is along the right of way. It doesn't mean that it's going there, but if it's not going there, it's...
We want to make clear that we're installing monitoring wells. We're not installing a permeable, permeable reactive barrier. That decision is more than a year away. This is to understand the hydrology, to see if a permeable reactive barrier would even be feasible. This is a feasibility study only for monitoring wells. So the monitoring wells, if they go in Nashouina, would be in the, in the shoulder. And whether it would be this part of the shoulder or that part of the shoulder, that's, that's a decision that would be made after the Cape Cod Commission and, and the EPA have reviewed the sites, that it may not rank high enough. You are correct that PRBs need to be at least 100 feet away from.
But it wouldn't make sense to put a well in a place you couldn't put the permeable reactive barrier in.
Correct. Correct. So we shouldn't be jumping ahead yet. If you look at that application, it's got, you know, half a page of criteria for selection. And so the, the concerns that were raised are valid.
Jerry?
One of the, Jerry Thomas, Wachewa consultant, one of the things, just to back up, we did have a consultant, C.D.M. Smith, go through an extensive evaluation. We have an executive summary. If we were going, if they were going to accept one of the sites, I would think, and Virginia might agree or disagree, that would probably be the site that we've done some extensive evaluations on, and it is along the right of way. It doesn't mean that it's going there. But if it's not going there, it's going to go someplace else, based on what we, based on the extensive studies we've done to date, and the fact it would be injection wells along the road right of way.
Virginia, can I speak?
Well, it's monitoring wells.
No, but I mean, I think it'd be, to be open, we have a study that recommends the location for PRBs that EPA was very interested in, and which we briefed EPA almost a year ago, on the pros and cons of that site. And there's no guarantee, we have to go very deep, that they would like the depth to the surface water interface, to freshwater, groundwater, saltwater interface, that that site would be amenable to them. That's, that's the only reason why I want to bring up that. And the other site is in Acapescot, I think we might have some preliminary ideas, but people get excited when you say, we don't have a site, I mean, where's the site? And then they say, oh, you knew this six months ago, but you didn't tell us. I want to be upfront that we're not going into this blind. We have two possible sites, and we'll wait for EPA to come back and decide which one they want to assist us with in informing information on groundwater characterization.
Michael?
I applaud the Water Quality Management Committee's efforts. I live in West Falmouth. I'm an expert at removing nitrogen from water, and I'm horrified at the state of West Falmouth Harbor. I hope every select wing goes down there, low tide looks, because we've, it's taken way too long to get here. But it's, we have, our town has been dealing with procedures and policies that have been adopted by other entities. But I think we need to move and fix West Falmouth Harbor. So thank you.
We have a motion and a second? Thank you.
I think this is the perfect example of the habit you people have gotten into. I mean, this was going to get pushed through again on the summary of actions with no public comment, and it's obvious the public wanted to comment on it. And I can also tell you that it won't be going on Acapescot because they've done borings there, and they just can't find the amount of nitrogen that is supposed to be there according to the MEP. So that's pretty much a guarantee it'll be in West Falmouth Harbor. But I like to point out that this shouldn't have been in the summary of actions, any more than the dredging of Little Pond and the taking money out of Article 17 of 2011 should have been in the summary of actions either. But that's just the way you guys do business, complete lack of transparency. Thank you.
Any further discussion on this item?
Jerry?
Jerry?
Jerry Thomas, I don't look to be an expert on PRBs, even though I am an advocate of it. If it's cited properly and we can afford it, PRBs are proven technology for industrial waste and all sorts of other type of waste. They just haven't been done for nitrogen. And the county has given us, which is Virginia, $75,000?
No. Well, the total, we got.
Total of $75,000 to do investigations in the top part of Acapescot. And the U.S. Geological Survey is also very interested in that study because they're also trying to do groundwater characterization on the South Coast. And yes, it's a very, very complicated. So as we zero in on a site, the more information we have, the more we can be informed as to, is it the Acapescot site? Well, probably has pluses and minuses. Or the West Falmouth site, that definitely has pluses and minuses. We just know a little bit more about a potential West Falmouth site than the Acapescot site. And all our reports are published, so people can look at the Begley Report and GHD Report on Acapescot might not have received as much publication because it was a technical report, kind of dry to read, but it's available.
Any further discussion?
No.
We have a motion and a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? The ayes have it. Moving on to our item of business. This is to approve an application for change of manager of an all-alcoholic common victory license, 77 O'Moore Street Incorporated, doing business at the Captain Kidd Restaurant. Do we have the applicant of the new manager here tonight? The new manager's name is Shawn Woods. Last manager was Frank Belfiori. Do we have any comments or questions? Patterson?
The only question I had, I believe it indicates that he's been a, a manager of a liquor establishment before, but nowhere does it say that he's TIPS certified. Can we, can we assume that's the case if he's got that previous experience?
Actually, if he's been a bartender at these establishments, he can't do that without being certified, so.
Okay.
We can certainly do that contingent upon confirming that. I do know we have to get his employee identification number anyway before he can be approved, so. We can do that with those two contingencies if you'd like.
I'll, I'll approve, or I'll move that we approve it with those contingencies.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the contingency of confirming TIPS certification and the employee identification number.
Right.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? The ayes have it. Next is to approve the application for change of manager of an all-alcoholic in-holder license. This is Host Mark Falmouth Management, doing business as Holiday Inn in Falmouth. The new manager's name is Mary Margaret Markey, and her last manager was Cheryl Barrett. Do we have either one of those here? Any questions or comments from the Board?
I move approval for the change of manager for the Falmouth Holiday Inn.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? The ayes have it. Next item, as to our committee liaisons. And my reasoning for putting this agenda was, even if we didn't make any changes, we could just restate who are the liaisons for each Board. But were there any people who were interested in making some changes from their assignments?
The only comment I'll make is that because most of the committees meet at the same time, Tuesday or Thursday, and we each have six or seven liaisons, it's just a little bit of a juggle to actually physically get to the meetings. That's, that's my only comment. We're always available by email, and the committees that I'm on, I always make a practice of being sure everyone on the committee has that information.
Mr. Patterson?
I would like to maybe propose, I've been going to the Affordable Housing Committee just because it actually is complimentary to the Community Preservation Committee's activities. I have not been able to get to the Waterways Committee because it does conflict with the Conservation Commission meeting. Would you be willing to swap with me?
I'd be happy to swap.
And that would alleviate that conflict and.
Okay. You wouldn't have any interest in giving up Finance Committee, would you?
I'd be going anyway.
All right. We'll keep it that way. We'll keep it that way. All right. If each Board member would just say which committees they are liaisons to, just to get that word out there again, so the committees, if they want to know who they could be contacting. I do want to reiterate, this does not mean that we are going to be attending each one of their meetings. We're certainly going to make an effort to get to some, but we are a contact person formalized, but they, of course, can talk, contact any five of, any one of the five of us. So Ms. Moffett?
It's the Beach Committee, the Cape Cod Water Protection Collaborative, the Council on Aging and Design Review Committee, and the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Mr. Patterson?
I'm liaison to the Affordable Housing Committee now, the Community Preservation Committee, the Conservation Commission, the Finance Committee, the School Committee, and the Town Building Committee.
Ms. Flynn?
The Bike Waste Committee, the Board of Health, the Cable Advisory Committee, the Coastal Ponds Committee, the Historic District Commission, the Historical Commission, and the Human Services Committee.
Ms. Moran?
And I'm liaison to the Affirmative Action Committee, the Commission on Disabilities. I'm a member of the EDIC. I'm liaison to the Energy Committee, Substance Abuse Commission, and the Veterans Council Committee.
And I'm working with the Agricultural Commission, Falmouth Housing Authority, Golf Advisory Committee, Library Trustees, Planning Board, Recreation Committee, and now the Waterways Committee. Okay. Next item is a, yes?
I'd like to ask about the Transportation Management Commission. And that is just, is that just once a month?
We don't have one anymore. They have, they, they were disbanded several years back.
But there is a transportation.
It's still on the list, but the.
But there's no one, there's no one in that group?
Well, there hasn't been. It doesn't mean there can't be, if you wanted to resurrect it, but to my knowledge, it hasn't been.
It does not have.
All right. Let me check into this, and I'll come back with some other information. Thank you.
Next item is a request on the early hours beach use, is a request for the use of beach earlier in the hours than our policy allows. Current request is from the John Wesley Methodist Church, who would like to hold services on Sundays in the morning. This question did come up quite a few years ago, which prompted the creation of our beach use policy, which provides that the beach will not be used prior to the opening of the beach, or prior to four o'clock in the afternoon. A lot of that is because the beach is not open, or the parking lots are not open at that point. But this has been the request, and we would consider a waiver an exception.
Mr. Chairman, I am Rebecca Manchelli, the pastor at John Wesley.
Sure, if you'd like to.
Hi. I am Rebecca Manchelli, the pastor at John Wesley United Methodist Church. I also have the privilege of being the chaplain to the Falmouth Police Department, and I did put this request in. I have served in two previous churches in towns on Cape Cod, one in South Yarmouth, and the service was held at the mouth of the Bass River on a, on a fishing pier there. The second was, my other church was on the Brewster-Dennis Line, and that was held on Corporation Beach in Dennis. Both were held from 7:30 to 8:00. They started out with maybe 30, 40 people. It became over 100 people each time. It was a, and I did this for primarily three reasons. One, because tourists come to Cape Cod, and they, many of them also look for a church. There's, they're not, they don't have a church home here, but the church on a beach, you can't get a better sanctuary than, than a beach and, and out in the open like that. And it's an opportunity for them to come to Cape Cod and have a worship service that just enhances their opinion and their view of the Cape or Falmouth. You know, they're going to come here and say there's great restaurants, and bike trails, and hiking trails, and art, and wow, I went to a beach service. And, you know, there's just an overall enhancement for the tourists. Second, there are those Cape Codders who, the summertime is when they have to work. And a lot of times, they have to be at work, you know, nine o'clock in the morning on a Sunday morning, and a 7:30 service offers, offers them an opportunity to still be able to worship on a Sunday morning and still get to, to the work that they have to get to. And finally, there are those that just don't like that little white church building, and they would, or they, they feel spiritual, they want to have a connection to, to God, and this offers them an opportunity to kind of come anonymously, to come and just worship, and just to come and enjoy an opportunity to, to be in nature and to have that, that spiritual experience. And so I have just found that in both places that I have done this and conducted this kind of service, that it just was very positive for the people who were there. It was very positive for the towns. Each time that I conducted this service, I would have people come up to me afterwards, and they're like, the town really lets you do this? And then, yes, and how great that is. It was just a general sense of goodwill for the town. And I am hoping that, that we can do this for the town of Falmouth. I understand that you have the, the beach regulations, and I understand that I am asking for a waiver. I do know that, and part of the reason for asking for Surf Drive is there is plenty of parking. There is an area that we can go to that, that for those who, who might need handicap accessible, there's, there's a place at the beach that they can just stay on there and, and have that service there. I did speak with, because as you know, I've had this out here for a couple of months, I did speak with Don, and at Surf Drive, he has indicated that there is an employee there by 6:30, so that if we came and set up at 7:15 and had the service from 7:30 to 8:00, I would make sure that everyone was out of there by 8:15 so that they could be relocked, the, the lifeguards could come in, the cleanup crew could come in, they could get all of the parking area set up, and then everybody could be open for business at nine o'clock. And so, yeah, I'm understanding that the parking locks were an issue. I did try to address that, and hopefully that will be something that will not be an issue.
Questions from the Board? Rebecca?
I think your idea is perfect in your profession. I think in a town, there is a lot of discussion about what your religious beliefs are, and there's a reason for us to have the rules. It would be the same idea if you said you wanted to go into the gym at the high school and have a religious service. So in all the things that you endorse and you want to do, is mixing a piece of public property with a private religious belief. And it's, that's the part, that, that's the part where the hitch is. And it's a very difficult subject to talk about when you are, you yourself are so close to it. But it's to understand that in the public, there is a different set of rules.
Right. And I appreciate where you're coming from. I think an opportunity like this, and one, let me just say that while I am a Methodist pastor, this is billed as a non-denominational service, and I think in your packets, I don't know if you gave them, but I did send out some information. Each church that I had this service, the newspaper ran articles on it, and each of the articles, you know, someone was from a Catholic church, someone didn't go to church. So I think providing an opportunity, by having this service, does not require that anyone from the public has to go. It's just another opportunity that the town is offering. If that's something that you choose to go to, that's great. If you choose not to go to, that's perfectly fine. It's just a non-denominational service. It's an opportunity for people to either take advantage of or not take advantage of.
Well, I want to say this Board has never stood in the way of any religious organization of any kind that wanted to have a service on the beach. I remember a few years ago, there was a religious group that had services on Old Silver Beach. And so I don't think that's really the issue. I think the issue is, when are the beaches open and when are they not open? And do we have staff available to make the beaches accessible very early in the morning? Now, we have beaches that are not locked, and I know you're aware of that.
Right.
Where you could go, it wouldn't, it, nothing would ever happen. But I do know that Don happens to be around early in the morning sometimes. So I think the issue is whether or not there is someone available to unlock the beach, and then to have you there, and then to lock it again until it becomes open to the public. And I think that's, that's the waiver that we're being asked, is to, is to have the beach unlocked early in the morning so this, so you can have this service, and then relock it, and then unlock it again for the public. So that's how I see the issue. And, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Mr. Chair? I would be in favor of granting the request at Trunk River or Minot. I think that would be less of, less coordination and burden on the, all of the, the workers that are required to, to adjust to, to these kinds of requests.
My concern about Surf Drive is that once you open up the parking lot, it sends a message that the beach is open and may be lifeguarded. Unless you're going to say it's open only to us to use and not to the general public to come in, I think that's creating an issue that is problematic. But I think in our public beaches, when they're.
But I think in our public beaches, when they're open, there may be an assumption, "Oh, they're open, I can go swim, and I'm going to be lifeguarded." And unless we're going to put up signs saying, "There is no lifeguard on duty," even though... and that's where I get a little bit as to, is the beach open, is it not open? I would be inclined to support the idea of either Trunk River or Menau Beach also, but I do understand the attractiveness of being downtown.
And part of it is parking, and part of the, is the convenience of being there. I mean, I've seen, you know, Trunk River, and it's the, if you do get a hundred-plus people there, the parking and the convenience of it, it loses some of that along the way. And I kind of appreciate your, the thought about the beach being open. I will say that in both previous places, there was, although they were not locked, they required beach stickers. And so I made it very clear that the service ends at this time, and we have to leave. And, I mean, most people that will come to a church service will honor that sense of what we're trying to do. And part of the reason, I originally thought, maybe I should do this at like 7:45, and then, and I say, "Okay, if I move it up to 7:30, and we do it till 8:00," it really does give time for us to get everyone out of there. And I mean, I would be very clear in saying, "The town of Falmouth has allowed us to use this. I'm asking everybody to leave, so that they can clear the lots and do their parking and, you know, do their cleanup, et cetera, and have, you know, everyone out of there." You know, I would do all that I can to make sure that happened. And because I might have some knowledge of some people in the police department, maybe someone could drive around and help me with that.
How many people do you expect would attend?
Well, in the previous two churches, like you said at the beginning, I might have thirty or forty, but after people have heard about it, I would have well over a hundred, have a hundred, twenty-five, a hundred fifty.
I also have a concern. You're now suggesting that resources of the police department be added to everything, all the other resources. And, you know, I think it's always good to, when you have a rule, to, you know, consider that there can be exceptions. But I'm concerned that, you know, with all of the organizations who could request such exceptions, religious and otherwise, you know, we really might have to actually defer this and really look at the policy generally. I thought, I really thought the suggestion about Trunk River and Menau, you know, was sort of a good compromise and maybe could be a test in terms of, you know, resources or whether they be parking or otherwise. But, you know, if that doesn't work, it does sound like maybe this would be something we should just defer and really look at the overall policy and see if it needs to be adjusted, or, I don't know, that's my thought. I don't know how anyone else feels.
Yeah?
I would be a little bit concerned that you're going to have people that are going to drive into that parking area who are not participating in your service. Go off, maybe go fishing or whatever, go walk down the beach, and then it's time for the service to end, and they're not part of your ad hoc congregation. So it does become complicated in that regard. You know, if it's an open parking lot, then it's clear, anybody can be in there. But if it's been a previously locked space and it needs to be cleared in order to prepare for the formal opening of the beach, it does make it a little bit more complicated. So I see logistic reasons why. You don't want to involve police to come down and try to patrol it. You can't screen participants, so it gets a little complicated. I'm supportive of providing an opportunity, I think it's free speech if nothing else, for you to congregate as a group someplace and hold a meeting service, if you will. But I think in a case like this, there's some logistics issues that make it complicated. So at a minimum, I would be interested in deferring it to take another look at it.
Yeah, it makes it a lot easier for us if the beach is already open and it's not locked, because then anybody can come and go. But when we have to unlock a very popular beach and then lock it up again early in the morning, and there's so many people that drive by early in the morning, and maybe they think that the beach is open and they can just go in and start setting up for the day. So I think you're right. I think we need, this board needs to have more of a discussion about it, because we have a very clear policy on the beach uses. And they don't discriminate, believe me. But at the same time, we have to be thoughtful about other activities that occur.
And the idea of using a beach permit as being a way of controlling them means you're limiting to only people who are residents, not to the tourists that you're talking about wanting to offer a service for, because they won't have the permits.
Right, if you do it within the permit time, right.
Or even, you're saying the only people, at the other places, you said they had to have a beach permit.
Oh, no, well, they did, but what happened, and that's why, and I understand the concern, but in both my times of experience, even though they did not have it, they came for the service, they did not have a beach permit, and they knew they had to be out of there at, if the beach is there, open at, you know, 8:30, so they knew that everybody had to be out. And I never had an issue in either town where people didn't leave when they were supposed to. You know, if they had the permit, if they had, I mean, everybody left. I'm trying to think of a time, they, both parking lots that I was dealing with required permit. And whenever the service was over, people just, they knew, they knew to leave. That was just the respect for the town, part of it, because they knew, I said, "That was part of the deal." I said, "The town has let us to do this, but one, you can't bring your dogs in, you can't, you have to leave so that the paying customers can come."
I'm very confident that the people who came for your service would respect that. It's the other people who would see an open beach lot and say, "Well, great, I want to pull in there." And I don't want your group to have to be in a position of saying, "No, not you," because I don't think that would be appropriate either. And so, "No, we're here, you know, we're here for this." I mean, I just think it is creating a very difficult situation.
Should we hear from Don?
Don, do you want to express any views on this?
First of all, I'm not the guy that's up there at 6:30. Thanks.
Gee, Don, I thought you were...
Thanks a lot. No, the only thing I offered was, I have a gentleman who comes in around 6:30 every day. It almost sounds, from what you're talking about, as it would need a parking attendant to control who's in and who isn't. I mean, that's what goes through my mind. The same thing happens at Menau, where it's wide open, there's a lot of fishermen up there, and when our guy comes in, he's got to go looking. Our guy, our girl, has to look and go to all these cars looking for who's got a sticker and who doesn't. So, I mean, that is a situation. I just, under a very controlled situation where you, my guy opens it up, and they're out of there by 8:15, I just thought that there was a possibility of that. But the idea of other people coming in might be a problem. As far as, if they had a, there's not many beaches that you can throw a hundred people in there, too, assuming they all have their own vehicle. Surf Drive, you do have enough parking. So what I offered, Minister, was the fact that I had a guy that was, he's in there early, he's the guy that cleans our building and so on. And I talked to him, he'd be willing to do that, but...
And also be willing to make sure the parking lot was cleared before, and locked before the morning?
He could probably do that.
Traffic comes along?
He could probably do that.
Yes?
Yes, yes.
That's something to think about. How would you, Mr. Chair?
Excuse me, he could not, if there was a car in there with a resident sticker...
Oh, yeah.
You know, he'd have to leave, he couldn't control that.
No, but they would be...
And that's a pay beach, too, during the day. You can pay to park there.
No, it's not a sticker beach.
It's, no, it's not as strictly a sticker beach, but you, obviously you can get in with a sticker.
Right.
So if there's cars in there with stickers, he'd have to distinguish between who was a, I mean, actually, it would require quite a bit of control by the Reverend, I would think, because she would know who were the participants.
Right. Or... I'm hearing that the Reverend would literally have to stand with the parking attendant and recognize, "Yes, that's a parishioner. No, that's not. Yes, that is." It just seems unwieldy.
In the ideal world, she wouldn't recognize them because it's...
Oh, that's right.
...open to the public, saying, "We want everyone to show up who feels like showing up," and it would be people, I think in the ideal world, that she doesn't, and I was like, "I just heard about it and wanted to show up."
And how to get them to leave.
Yeah.
Mr. Fenneren?
It's just my opinion, but I'm a little disappointed. You know, we've turned voters into sinners and not allowed them into our schools, and how are we going to basically turn people that want to worship into sinners? I mean, what kind of problem are these people really going to cause? We have beaches that are opened anyway. The main reason for closing the beaches is to keep the party people out at night, so they're not there smashing glass and that kind of thing. You know, I think if you even left that thing open in the morning, what's the difference? I mean, you should at least give them a shot. Thank you.
Joe Puntle, Precinct 9. A little rebuttal to Mrs. Moffett's comment about the religious activities on the church or faiths on the beaches. Then change the Massachusetts law about under God and our pledge of allegiance to the flag. Don't do the pledge of allegiance here, okay? We are God, fair and country. I served my time, so we can defend it, and also mine. I highly recommend that, it's not my faith, that you consider it and give it a trial example, even if you're requesting documentations from the previous locations where she used, from the Board of Selectmen, Town Manager, whatever it be, that there were no problems. Give it a shot. I can't go fishing on the beaches that I have mobility to get to, because you're closing. There is nothing in here for the residents to use prior to nine o'clock in the morning, even if I pay for a beach sticker. I walk with a cane, and metal detector, my scoop is my cane. Sometimes I have a time walking. You know, I like to walk down there before the tourists and the residents use the beach. But I strongly recommend that we allow John Wesley Church to try it on an experiment. Mr. Hoff says he thinks he can make it. He's the guy that's in charge. Give him a shot, see what you happen. You're making his decision for him. Let him come up and say, "Maybe we can do it." And if it doesn't work, so be it. Thank you.
Well, from a personal perspective, I think it's a good thing to do. And I think if, I think any church that wanted to use the beach, and we've, it's occurred in the past, Old Silver Beach, I remember, we had, some religious groups have services there. I think, I rely on Don Hofer. If he thinks he can handle it in terms of the opening, you know, of unlocking it and locking it again prior to when the beach is actually open, and he's already in early in the morning anyway, I say, "Let's give it a shot."
I have a concern that this issue hasn't been aired sufficiently. I think that every organization, including religious organizations, would love to have early morning beach meetings. I think it's a terrific idea. And I just have a concern that we're overcommitting our resources. It's just not something that we've either opened up for public discussion with sufficient notice, I don't think, to other organizations. And I also think that it might be a good thing to do, but we should do it for everyone, and we should commit the resources to do it staffing-wise, and, you know, whether it's picking up trash, taking care of, you know, keeping track of parking, you know, it might be a good thing to consider. I just don't know, and that sounds like a policy change to me, so I don't know that we can do it just...
Well, there is a history to this. I mean, religious groups that have asked to use the beaches in the past, there haven't been many, but those who have, have been able to do it, because they are religious groups, and that's what they want to do, and they can. I mean, we've never discriminated against...
The only information we don't have, that I think we could get, would be what would happen if we did it. I feel I have the other information that's out there, and the only way I could get the information as to how owners would it be, how much taxing would it be to our staff is to try it.
Try it for a couple of weekends?
We can speculate as to what it would be, but I just don't think there is that data out there as to what the effect would be.
I still have to come in with my view that you do not mix the two. And it is not for Falmouth to provide a place for a religious belief Sunday after Sunday after Sunday. I believe if it's happened, if it's happened in past years, it has never been a continuous from June to September. It's been a wedding, it's been a special religious holiday, it's been one time. But I think that in mixing religion with town government is not something that I would agree with.
We would have to have another waiver, another part of our policy waived, because we also limit to, an individual, two permits per month for any specified time. So we would have to be realizing that we are granting, you know, an exception to that permit policy also, if we were going to do it every Sunday.
And I'm just curious if Don has anything to add, now that we've fleshed this out a little bit more, and how confident he is that, you know, this is, this could be well handled.
May I also, just as Don comes up, also say, your comment, too, about having an experiment or to do it for a period of time to get kind of that data that you're looking for, that would be great.
Yeah, I think I'd be willing, I understand what you're saying as far as control. And a lot of it would be self-control on the part of the participants, in other words, getting out of there at the right time. If there are any cars in there after they leave that aren't part of that group, we'd have to handle them separately. So what I want to lead up to is that, quite possibly, if you want to try it for one Sunday, and then have me report back if there's any problems, or that type of thing.
I would like to do that. I would like to try it for a Sunday and see how it goes. And if there are no issues, then Don can come back and tell us, and we can take it from there. It isn't the first time that, I mean, this is some, because some, I mean, religious people have a right to use the public beach. I mean, there's no question about that, and we understand that. And we don't want to discriminate just because you're a religious organization. But I'd be, I'd be comfortable making a motion to allow the Methodist, the Wesley Methodist Church, to use the public beach on Surf Drive for a Sunday, to be determined, and Don then report back to us and let us know how it went. If his staff was able to unlock the lot, if the cars were out in time, where they could lock them again before the public arrived for the beach hours, then I'd be, that would be my motion.
With a specified date or a date to be determined?
I would say a date to be determined between Don and Reverend.
Rebecca.
Rebecca, and Rebecca, okay.
And may I just, and I agree, I want to just say two other things. One is, would it be...
Mike, please.
Yes, I'm sorry. If it would be possible to do it two weeks in a row, and the reason I say this is because sometimes, just the initial time, people don't, and you might not get as many. I think if you at least establish a little bit of a habit the next Sunday, it's going to be a little bit more understandable as what the rest of the season would be like. So my suggestion is maybe go two weeks.
I'll amend my motion to include two weeks.
And if possibly, then I could meet with Don and maybe coordinate it around your next meeting, so we could, you have some information to bring back to that meeting. So if you will kind of allow me and Don and I the discretion to determine those two Sundays...
And let us know what they are.
Okay, thank you very much for that. And just as one other thing to, again, and just, you were talking about experience and some of the data, and just the fact that two large towns on Cape Cod did allow this, and each time I had to go before the Board of Selectmen in Yarmouth and in Dennis, and after the first summer, I never had to go back again. It was just, it was written off. "Oh, we expected your letter, we expect..." "Oh, we expected your letter, we expect your, you know, here it is, have a great job, we love it when you come." So there is a little bit of background basis that I can bring to this experience from other Cape towns. But I appreciate the fact that you're willing to move that we get a couple of shots...
Well, that's my motion.
Your motion. I know, I don't know how you're going to vote, but I appreciate at least the motion.
Second.
So the motion, second, to allow for two Sundays in a row as arranged between Don and Don.
Mr. Chairman, could I make one comment? In the interest of public safety, I would ask the board to consider having Don post a sign that there are no lifeguards on duty. When a lot's open, people believe in Falmouth you can come and swim. They're certainly welcome to do that, but we need to let them know from a risk management standpoint that this is not a lifeguarded beach until such time as the lifeguards are on duty.
I think that's appropriate.
I think that would be a good precaution.
Actually, I don't think it might be appropriate if the church create a sign saying, you know, encouraging people to come to a service, "The beach is not open for swimming," and put it on them to create that sign. And that might also do a little bit of discouraging other people from parking.
My only caution is, I don't know how you enforce no swimming. Once the parking lot is open and there's a beach there, so that's all I'm saying is...
I've included the sign saying, "There is no lifeguard on..."
No lifeguards in this.
"There is no lifeguard."
I think that would be helpful.
So we have a motion, and we have a second?
I second it, yeah.
To suggest a two-sunday trial period. Any further discussion?
My name is Jeremy Taglifair. I have the pleasure of working with Rebecca at the John Wesley and I Methodist Church, and I'd just like to say that if you're going to try this experiment with anyone, it should be Rebecca. She is incredibly organized, she's very good at getting all her ducks in a row, and she's very good at communicating what is expected of us as a congregation. So I have no doubt in my mind that as we gather as a group, it will be made clear to everyone what the expectations are for meeting on the beach. Thanks.
Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ms. Moffett? That passes four to one. Next item on our agenda are some interviews and appointments. First is for a regulatory board member, and our policy, by our charter policy, or our board policy, is any reappointment for a regulatory board, we do hold an interview. And I understand we have a full-time position from July 1st, 2015, to June 3rd, 2018, and we have two applicants, or two people who've expressed interest in this position, Maureen Harlow-Hawks and Elizabeth Gladelter. And so, Maureen? Why don't you go first, I don't see Betsy here.
Good evening, Maureen Harlow-Hawks, 9 Old Dock Road, and I'm back again, it was only a month ago. We made the quorum, the public was happy, and we were able to vote. So now I'm back, there's still an opening, again, as there was before, whether it's an alternate or full-time, makes no difference to me, as long as the board has the capability to serve the public and...
Rebecca?
Rebecca?
And not... Excitement, see when you get what you want. And that's why I'm back. Because my term has expired on the 30th, and there's still another opening again. I think you remember my spiel last time, I'll give it again if you want.
I don't think it's necessary.
Why did I think that you were already appointed?
They were.
I was.
You were.
I was.
But it was just for a month.
It was for the month. I was, I went for either the alternate or the full-term, and I think it was Mr. Jones who recommended, which was prudent, that I had more experience, and because of the quorum issue, that I didn't have to get up to speed at that point. I already knew the regs, and it would have helped the board at that point, so. And again, now there are quite a few of the old school back. So again, whether it's alternate or full-time, it's, the experience is gaining back on the board again.
Any other questions? Sam?
It's not a question. I've been to two of the Conservation Commission meetings, and Maureen's been participating, and she's been a very constructive contributor to the deliberations of that commission, so...
Thank you.
Of course, I don't want to speak, can't compare you to Betsy, but I would have reservations...
She knows her rights. I couldn't compare Betsy to her either, so I mean...
Exactly, so, yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And how would the board like to proceed?
I would like to move that we appoint Maureen Harlow-Hawks to a permanent position ending, excuse me, 2030, 2018, June 30th.
June 30th, 2018.
2018.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is for the EDIC, and I believe we actually have two different people to consider for this. One is a reappointment for Mr. Fox. I did see here earlier, this is not a regulatory board, so we do not need to, my policy goes through this interview. We did have a recommendation from the EDIC of that reappointment. Any discussion on Mr. Fox being reappointed from...
I would just, in answer to your question, say that Pete really has an incredible amount of knowledge in terms of just the real estate issues in particular that the EDIC deals with, so he's been a really important member, and I think the board appreciates his willingness to continue in that regard.
Okay. entertain a motion to appoint Jim Fox to a term ending June 30th, 2018, the EDIC?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Second, we also have a request for appointment, Christopher Limes, who we interviewed, I think, two or three weeks ago. We've had a referred recommendation from the EDIC that they are very pleased with that recommendation, of that nomination. Again, would be a term ending June 30th, 2018.
I move approval of appointing Christopher Limes to a term ending June 30th of 2018.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Limes. Okay, next we have the Historical Commission. We have three vacancies and an unexpired term until June 30th, 2016, an unexpired term until June 30th, 2017, and a full term until June 30th, 2018. And we need that one applicant, Lee Drescher. Lee, if you'd come forward and tell us why you'd like to be on the Historical Commission, please.
Good evening. I would like to be on the Historical Commission because I believe that the town of Falmouth is a beautiful town, and has many wonderful historic buildings and places that need to be preserved. I have worked on the Save the Nimrod Committee and been active in some of the affairs. I think last winter was just a particularly devastating winter for the town of Falmouth, where we lost some very valuable historical properties. And I would just like to do my best to help to save the historical buildings of Falmouth and to keep the wonderful nature of this town. We have such a beautiful town green, and we're such a pristine town, and we don't want to become a Hyannis.
Questions for Drescher?
Have you been able to attend any of the meetings?
Yes, I have. Not recently, but I have attended a lot of the meetings when we were involved in the Nimrod. And I attended a lot of meetings in North Falmouth, down in that little village center, and worked with many of the people who are now on the Preservation Commission.
Thank you.
What would be the special thing that happens in Falmouth that you would be interested in as a Historical Commission member? What is it that you would like to either change, or to maintain, or to make sure that we continue?
I was, I thought taking the Delinsky House away to make a tire store, when Falmouth already has three tire stores, was unnecessary. Thank goodness, they were able to save a few artifacts. There was another wonderful home somewhere down towards the beach, and I can't remember exactly where, that was destroyed that year. The Save the Nimrod Committee actually did make some progress with keeping the Nimrod, which is still there, and I realize nothing's happened. And I am in favor of finding solutions that work for everybody. And just not, and also the El Marchin, I was very active in that, I went to see that, and I'm so glad that hopefully that's, something good is going to happen to that. I was unhappy about some buildings across the street. And so I would just do anything I can to preserve what we have, its historic nature, and honor and respect the historic buildings and properties of Falmouth.
Thank you.
So how would you draw the line? Do you think there are any buildings that could be torn down? And where would you draw the line and say, "Okay, you know, that one can be, this one shouldn't be"? I think that's a very hard thing to determine, as to, is it, no buildings ever get torn down, or how do you draw that line?
No, I think maybe you do have to tear some buildings down. And actually, there was a building in North Falmouth, and apparently it was a very, very old house, and it was like the first nigh property, and it was at the beginning of Old Main Road. And they did tear it down, and Warren Dalton, I believe, had that project. And apparently, it really was just rotten to the core. I was sad about that, but I think you have to pick and choose. And I think that Falmouth has been doing too much throwing away in the past few years.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Warren, it's a pleasure.
I move that we appoint Lee Drescher to a term, I mean, the Historical Commission ending in June 30th of 2018.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second from Ms. Flynn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for stepping forward.
Thank you, and I'll also just say that I think the church service on Surf Drive is a great idea, I'm all for it. And the Methodist, they're kind of the middle-of-the-road side of the conversation, I wouldn't worry about them.
Next on our agenda are the reappointments of non-regulatory committee incumbents. These are incumbents who have expressed interest in being reappointed to the following committees, and I believe we have not had other people applying for these positions. Would you like me to read them off, and at least in groups of five, and do those at a time?
I think we should.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Okay, and for the present, these are all terms ending June 30th, 2018, to the Affirmative Action Committee, Scobro Rhodes, to the Affordable Housing Committee, Holly Wilson and Kimberly Kahn, to the Agricultural Commission, Caroline Gabriel, to the Beach Committee, Jason Chorches, to the Bike Ways Committee, Kevin Lynch and Joanne Fishbaugh.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Constable James Crosson... I say, Cape Cod Compact, Ronald Swag. Constable James Crosson and Kevin Casey. Council on Aging, Cynthia Barclay, Susan Ripley, Susan Gallagher, and Brenda Swain. Design Review Committee, Arthur Calafi, and the Commission on Disabilities, Kim Douglas.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Human Services Committee, Tanya White.
EDIC? Oh, you did that? Oh, sorry.
Port Counsel, Robert Munir. Solid Race Advisory Committee, William Peck. And the Board of Surveyors, Michael Duffney and Michael McGrath.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. To the Veterans Council Committee, this is a yearly term, so term ending June 30th, 2016. At-large Member Robert Foose, At-large Member Randy Colette, At-large Member Curtis Frye, from the Military Support Group, Carol Kenny, from the Disabled American Veterans, Joseph Contilianni, Alex Lodge, John Simtchuk, AmVets, Jim Sawyer, and VFW Ahmed A. Mustafa.
Moved to reappoint.
Second. Motion to second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? The ayes have it. Term ending June 30th, 2018, the Water Quality Management Committee, Stephen Leighton and Roland Swag.
So moved.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Wayer Certified Cape Cod Aggregates, term ending June 30th, 2016, David Peterson, Paul Arusso, Robert Umbrello, Samuel Arusso, Linda DeVito, Ted Freeman, Ted Boothfield, Tracy Post, Paul DeVito, Michael Thomas, Jennifer Quinn, Darren Allen, and the Wayer Certified Transfer Station, Ernest Santos and Christopher Duggan.
Moved reappointment?
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. And two other annual appointments, and I believe this is a term ending June 30th, 2016, Parking Clerk Patty O'Connell and Assistant Parking Clerk Tracy Cecil.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I might mention that I know that the Community Preservation Committee will be reviewing project applications over the next month and a half, starting this Thursday. Kenneth Buckland has been our appointee to that committee and has served on it for the last year. He indicated he did not want to continue for the next year, but I did approach him and ask whether he'd be willing to continue to serve for the month of, through the month of August, excuse me, through the month of July. And he did indicate he'd be willing to do that. And because it is a critical review period, and he is familiar with the procedures, I don't know whether we can make an appointment through the end of July as an interim position, or whether we want to just wait until the end of June in case we get another application that would cover that position.
I think the only way we can do that is he applies, we appoint him, and he resigns. I don't think we can actually take that without an application.
Thank you, I'll pass it on.
Next is approval request for a new common victual license. This is the Thai Kitchen, 258 T-Ticket Highway in East Falmouth. Do we have anyone from the organization or representative here?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My first meeting with you in the chairman role, congratulations. My name's Kevin Clower, I'm an attorney with Ahmed Law Firm here in Falmouth, and I represent Thai Kitchen Incorporated. I'm here tonight with Saite Wethen, who is the owner and the manager of the property. Ms. Wethen recently entered into a lease for the property at 258 T-Ticket Highway, formerly the home of the Subway, located right near the School of Administration Building. And she's seeking a common victual license for a Thai restaurant. There's no liquor license involved, it is, there is a dine-in option, but it's, the business would primarily takeout and delivery. This will allow a new and attractive restaurant to enter the market. Ms. Wethen has a long history in restaurants and has run in number in the past. She is the manager and a Surf Safe certified. She's excited to begin this venture here in Falmouth and become part of the community and to offer another option for cuisine in the area. If there's any questions that I can answer, or Ms. Wethen can answer, we'd be happy to address them, and that's it.
Any questions?
I did have a question, that there didn't seem to be any inspector on the Building Commissioner's part. Did that get done, or is that not required in this situation? Did that get done, or is that not required in this situation?
The, the building, we have been working with the building department. I'm not sure if the final inspection has taken place just yet.
We have a note here that says, now I won't be able to find it.
We have one from, yeah, but not from the building's record.
We have, we have been working with the building department in terms of some, some things that have taken place at the property, so I'm not.
Lee has the final.
Well, as I know is.
This is Lee Norbunchart, who is one of the lawyers of the restaurant.
Good evening, Board. This Wednesday morning, the inspections will come in. The reason we have to wait is we, we need to connect all equipments at the same time. We need five, we need building, and we need help to be together. So, everything is complete. We just need your approval for, for common visual inspections.
Then our approval would be contingent upon the inspections being approved.
Of course.
Projected opening date?
Basically, as soon as possible. I think at this point.
Inspections are done?
Yeah. I should have brought some menus with us. We have some very nice menus printed up.
Well, I move approval contingent on successful inspections.
Second.
I just said, just, did you say it's in the old Subway building?
Yes, it's the.
The building where Subway used to be, when it was a separate building.
Exactly.
Okay.
But probably a few years ago now, but.
And they have an owned property in Falmouth previous?
They, they.
This is their first time?
They're leasing, they're leasing the property here in Falmouth. Yes, this is their first restaurant in Falmouth.
That they've done in Falmouth?
Correct.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Thank you very much. Good luck.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next is a request for a sign variance for the John Wesley United Methodist Church, corner of Jones Road, and additional sign at the bottom of the existing sign. And we did receive a message from the Designer Review Committee, just coming in fairly recently, that they did recommend the sign, that they feel it is a bit large, still within the bylaw, but still presentable. And so their recommendation is that we do approve this.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion to second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Approved. We have one seasonal liquor license renewal. This is for a secondhand dealer, Cape Cod Gold and Silver coin, on 44 Main Street, Falmouth. This is just a renewal for license that they've had.
A second here, Bill. I move approval.
Motion?
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. The ayes have it. The next is to discuss potential reconsideration of the board selectman's position on the 151-28A intersection design. This is, we had a roundabout presentation about a month ago, and I asked that we just have it on the agenda. Do we want to reconsider, or are we okay with the position that we already meant? I was not intending this to be a long discussion, because if we're going to reconsider it, that would be a much lengthier discussion, but just.
What was our decision? I missed the first one, but, so I'm not sure about the second.
In November 24th, we sent a letter saying that we would prefer that they stick with the signalized.
The signalized intersection.
And that has been supported by our town engineer and by our police and fire department. And I just want, because they did come to us, I was moved to think about it, but wanted to ask the board how you all felt, and whether you wanted to reconsider our previous position or not. Tim?
I was convinced by the second presentation that, that actually a roundabout rotary in that intersection actually would be a favorable thing. I think what captured me was the analysis of the probability of accidents, that a rotary reduces the probability of accidents. As an engineer, I've done reliability analysis on equipment, and I could tell you that you take each component or element of whatever that system is, and you look at this probability of failure, you look at the total effect.
See, again, I don't want to get into discussions that say you're really going to reconsider.
I would actually like to have a discussion. I don't want, I don't like going against the recommendations of our engineer and our, you know, fire chief. So I would like to see this deferred into a working group to kind of take a look at some of these issues, and see if we can't come up with a consensus.
But that would be a part of the reconsideration, I mean, as to whether we're just.
Okay, then I move to reconsider it.
Rebecca?
One of the. Excuse me?
Your motion is second.
No, I just want to second his motion.
One of the discussions that they had is the roundabout, a rotary in Norfolk, Massachusetts. And I have spoken about it before, so I was there within the last three days. You can put four cars on that rotary, and that's the one they're using as the example for 151 and 28. And the reason I say this.
Just use the word roundabout, because a rotary is a different thing.
Well, then let's use roundabout. Whatever is, whatever's saying there. So I entered from Route 115, coming, coming over from Foxborough, and I came down 115. Now, high on a hill, probably five blocks away, is a CVS and a dry cleaners and whatever it is. So there's another road that takes you into that area. The reason I'm describing it is what they use. Now, we have one going over to Barnstable. And the one that the state is talking about, in the roundabout, is nowhere near the size of the one in Barnstable. It isn't as big. So I, as I came into it, I wanted to see how many cars can fit on the roundabout. So when you bring the first two in, you're already on the other side. And then you can take whatever road you want to go to after that. So if you want to think about it as cars are moving, there's not a lot of cars that I see on the size of the one they're talking about in Norfolk.
So you're interested in reconsidering?
Well, I don't, I don't see just moving, it's, it's too much traffic out there. If they made it the size of the one that is going over to Barnstable, if it was that size, then you're going to move a lot of cars.
Sue?
I really appreciate all of the expertise, the reconsideration, the superior knowledge that our safety and engineering professionals put into an open-minded second look. And I appreciate the fact that all of the proponents from the state admitted that all of their comparisons, to my understanding, they agreed that they were not in the same situation as Falmouth with as much seasonal traffic. And also the fact that the, the fatalities they were comparing were not relevant, because there haven't been at this intersection. In fact, our fire chief has said there are other intersections that actually have more of a dangerous factor, or more incidents in, in injuries. So I, I think, you know, certainly the state expressed their view that they want to move on from this and get construction started. And we've now had two complete reviews, and at least one, I think, three presentations that I personally was at, where the, all of the, our experts who we, you know, who we hire to advise us on, on these, these situations, have all said, not that it's not a good idea, they've said it's a very, very bad idea. They've been very, very certain in their disagreement about the roundabout. And so I would, I would not want to delay the state any further. I would not want to have what would be, I guess, a fourth discussion on this. I, I'm ready to support the, the officials in the town who have reviewed us, this for, for us, as well as my own view, which is in agreement with their review. So I, I'm ready to make a decision against the roundabout, and that it be a, a signalized intersection that's improved from the one we have, as they've, as they've suggested in their design.
We have a motion and a second to reconsider our recommendation of November. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Sorry. Sure.
Is that why you're here?
How's everybody doing? Jamie McDonald, North Falmouth. I appreciate the board looking at reconsidering this, and you've heard from experts, state, who are, they want the roundabout, but they wanted to acquiesce to the locals. What I think you want to look at also, this is not just a transportation issue, this is a planning issue. You expand that into a signalized intersection. You're going to impact 151, you're going to impact the whole, the whole entrance into North Falmouth. It's not, I think you have to reach out beyond just the transportation people. I think you have to go to the Traffic Advisory Board that we have in this town. Even though they're a town, they should have some input into this thing. I think the town planner should have some input. I, I don't think you can just isolate it into just a traffic issue. There's more to it. Roundabouts are new to us in the states, but the idea of calming traffic, I think is a good idea. So I would ask that the board would reconsider. Thank you.
Tim?
We weren't supposed to get into a elaborate discussion, but let me say that I have experience that they actually elicited. Until they popped up picture, I had not remembered the roundabouts used in Annapolis, Maryland, where I lived for 10 years, and I, and used those roundabouts. They were located in the historic part of the town, in the center, next to a boating area, where they actually hold one of the largest boat shows in the world. There's the Naval Academy, St. John's University, the capital of Maryland there. You've got a huge amount of tourist, traffic, restaurants, bars, boutiques. You've got major hotels. And it's a very congested area, but it's been a roundabout for a long time. And what it does is it calms the traffic coming in those areas, so that everybody has to be alert about pedestrian use and what have you. I think Jamie has hit on a good point. When people are coming down 151 at 50 miles an hour, coming off of the 28, onto, you know, on their ramp and what have you, you're coming into a village area now. The one thing that that rotary is likely to do is just make everybody slow down and think about the fact that you're now in a different environment. We've heard complaints from people that live in the West Falmouth Village about the speed of, of cars going down West Falmouth Highway. It's a problem that we need to worry about. And I think, given the testimony we're hearing from Chester Tech, it really brought back a lot of thinking that's more in terms of an overall planning issue, that suggests that maybe we really should take a look at that. What I'm actually is asking for is the opportunity to sit with our town engineer and our fire chief. Let's look at their concerns and why they think their recommendation for signalized intersection should remain. I, I don't want to overrule them. I would just like to have a further discussion about it.
In response to Sue's request, could we do, change the motion to a date specified as in our last meeting in June, so we can end this, reconsider it, and then make a decision? So in two weeks, we can tell the state, yep, this is how we feel, go ahead and proceed, and not have this drag on, so, because the state does want to move along with that. I mean, I'm, I'm interested in reconsidering it. I'm not saying I want to support the rotor, the roundabout, because I want to get the information, but I want to consider again that.
Well, I just, yeah, I, I, I agree with postponing it to the end of the month. But I want to say too, that, you know, at least three days a week, I go through three different roundabouts. Two of them are very calming. I mean, they're very simple. You just approach them, it's slow, you go around them, you keep on going, or you go this way. The one at 149 and Route 6 is a very busy roundabout, because it's traffic that comes off Route 6, traffic going on Route 6 from Route 149, and it's a much busier roundabout. But I have to tell you, both of them, the calming, the, the, the one that's not so busy and the one that is busy, they really work very, very well. They really do. And I think people on the Cape are getting used to that, at least the people who live in that area are. So I think it's really worth having another discussion, because I don't think it is as onerous as maybe we might think. I think it could do a lot, as Sam was saying, with the traffic that comes down Route 151. And you do come right down that, down that hill, so to speak, and hit that traffic light. So I'm all for having a discussion with more people by the end of the month, around the end of the month.
Mr. Chairman, could I just clarify? The board may recall, and I just want to confirm, the town planner has been significantly involved in this since the get, since the inception of the proposal. So I just wanted to confirm that this would not be a new, and the town planner has weighed in on this in the past as well.
And, and he was very much against it.
Correct. He was opposed. He preferred a conventional signalized intersection.
Right. And one last thing, the, all of the examples do not have the commercial activity on this particular site. They don't have people trying to get in and out, get pizza, there's a small parking lot, there's apparently going to be more development in that area, and that, so we, part of the reason why our experts have gone with the signalized design is because there really was no apples-to-apples comparison.
So we should probably look for that. But I also think too, that the big thing it does is it slows people down. So whatever's there at the intersection, whether it's traffic lights or, or a roundabout, people are going to, people are, people are going to have to slow down, and it makes a difference. So we'll see.
Tim?
Okay, well, one of the, the likely accident scenarios that goes away when you go with a rotary is people turning left, and particularly when there's a traffic light. We all know there are people that like to step on it to try and beat the red light, and there are also people who try to go through the yellow to get through the intersection to keep on going. So they're speeding up when they should be slowing down. And I personally witnessed someone getting hit by someone, they thought that person was going to stop on the yellow, but they didn't, and they came through and hit the person as they were trying to make a yellow, a, a left-hand turn. It's that kind of behavior that I think the rotary dispenses with. And I'm worried about the fact that when people are distracted by cell phones and you name it, things on the side of the road, that one of those times, they're going to not hit just an automobile with a passenger in it, but there's some protection, but could easily hit a bicyclist. And I, that, and I, and I would suggest, by the way, that the rotary I'm talking about in Annapolis is an extremely commercialized situation, much more so than that corner will ever be. I just want to, I really want to have a discussion with the town engineer, with the planner if necessary, and with the fire chief, and just literally compare it to what Tetra Tech is telling us. And are we really looking at this thing objectively and analytically? Or are we saying, look, no, no change, please, you know, we like it the way it is? That's, that's, so that's really, my hope is, I don't want to over, I don't want to go beyond their recommendation. I just would like to have a chance to revisit it with them.
Well, Lafayette knew what he was doing when he created the circle symbol, Washington.
Well, I think that issue is the size. I don't think there's anything in talking about roundabouts. But when they're too small, they don't work.
They don't work as well.
And then if you look at 149, they don't, they do not.
I appreciate the anecdotal, Jamie McDonald, again. Thanks for reconsidering. Two weeks is fine, and I'd love to see the planner's report, and if you can release any information to the public that's possible within a timely fashion. So we have something to handle, or do you want me to go back through the archives and dig it out? You know, that's all I ask. All right, thank you.
I think we've had our discussion.
I think we have.
I think so.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So four to one passed, and we'll reconsider that on, try to put that on our agenda for June 29th.
Mr. Chairman, and could we have a date when we could get the town planners together so we can actually meet and have a discussion about this?
I'm hoping they would come to that. Invite them to that meeting.
Oh, to that meeting?
Yeah.
And not a discussion ahead of time? I mean, I, I would just sort of like to get those key people in the rooms together and just revisit it from a technical standpoint.
I would think we would interview them at that time. And I, I think that information needs to be heard by everybody.
Okay.
As we make our decisions to what we're going to think. Okay, individual selectmen's reports. Mr. Ray.
Sure. I would just like to thank Mary Pat Flynn for her service to the Cape and Islands Selectmen's Association. She has served as president, and her term has ended. So thank you for your service.
You're most welcome. It was a great year.
Topic, it, it really is important to, you know, get all of the Cape together, and there are so many issues we have in common, whether it's water, traffic, and that's, in being, having someone from Falmouth in that leadership role has been very important. So I really appreciate that.
So I really appreciate that.
Oh, well, you're very welcome. And I, that's one of the things when I was selected as selectman, is that I always thought it was important for a selectman from Falmouth to be, to participate in the All-Cape Selectmen's Association, because there's a lot to learn. And even though there are a lot of small towns on the lower part of the Cape, we, we learn a lot from them, and it's been very beneficial for me all these years.
Any other?
And it continues to be for this year.
Sam?
Yeah, I, and as part of thanking Mary Pat, just to highlight the things that took place this past Friday morning at Cape Cod Selectmen's Association. John Robertson, who's the legislative liaison for the Massachusetts Municipal Association, was there, and came to highlight us, to highlight and ask for our support relative to certain legislation that's going through, you know, our state office, our state Congress right now. And that was extremely informative. And so that's the kind of tip. Dan Wolf, Senator Wolf's aide-
Sue Rohrbach.
Sue Rohrbach was there to actually raise an issue about fisheries management. Apparently, we've had a 12-mile limit on large commercial fleets with fine mesh nets sweeping through and taking out virtually the entire fish stock. That limit is being considered to be moved into three miles. And she is basically raising her, really, Dan Wolf, Senator Wolf, is raising the issue, this could have a devastating effect on the fish stocks. We're already, you know, facing fish catch limits by our local fleets, but these are large commercial vessels that are coming in from even other foreign countries, and doing this wholesale sweep-through, and literally collecting everything with huge amount of buy, cash, kill as well. So this was raised at that meeting, and basically asking all the municipalities to come to bear in influencing both the Massachusetts Marine Fisheries, and also the NOAA, National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, of which we have a Department of Fisheries here, right in Woods Hole, to try to let them know what the impact is going to be on Cape Cod. So that, it's the benefit of having these kind of collaborative gatherings, if you will. Can I go on, on a couple of other things?
Sure, absolutely.
I attended two workshops at the end of last week, co-sponsored by the Buzzards Bay Coalition, and also by the Webner, the McQuaid Bay National Estuarian Research Center, that basically helped in teaching us some communication skills to educate the public on various issues. The first one was basically how to engage people, in other words, get your attention, and, and do it in an effective way. And the second day was basically all the ways that you can reach out to people. Now, you may say, that's just obvious. Well, you know, it used to be, what, gatherings of groups, newspapers, and telephones, right? Well, now, what do we have? We have email, and we have all of the social media and everything. It's become a far more complex thing, and we have all this data gathering going on by Google Groups and, and Facebook that can provide you with all kinds of information about who you're reaching and who you're not. Anyway, it's a very valuable workshop to help us be more effective in communicating. And I look at this little pond sewer service area effort that we've got going, and our, all communication's going to be difficult, and, you know, and, but we probably could have done a better job with some of the tools that have been passed on in these workshops. I hope we can perhaps be more effective the next time. But it was a very valuable two workshop days that I spent both in New Bedford, and then also in Hyannis, where they were actually held. The last thing is just to mention that I attended, along with my selectman, the Portuguese-American Celebration of the Day of Portugal. It was just a great evening, where Dr. Cunera, who is the Portuguese consul at New Bedford, was there and spoke very favorably about the relationship between the two countries. Both Senator Vinnie de Mecida were there, and Representative David Vieira were there. I think both of Portuguese background, descent in one way or another. And it was a great social occasion, commemorative occasion, and I have to tell you that I thoroughly enjoyed not only the dinner, but also the dance performance that was done. It was a group from Norwood, Massachusetts. But the takeaway for me was to watching this little five-year-old girl doing Portuguese folk dancing, along with, you know, 60-plus-year-old men playing the accordion, I'm sure they've got another name for it, as well as other instruments. The family nature of this dance group was just so impressive and heartwarming, I would say. So my hat's off to the Portuguese-American club here in Falmouth, which meets at the Navigator Club. What a great occasion, and very much impressed with this, their community. And I know so many people in that group who are major contributors to this community in many, many, many ways. So it was thoroughly enjoyed.
Anyone else?
Well, just in case no one has heard, I thought you might want to know that this past week, the governor signed the 208 resupply plan for Cape Cod. So that's good to know. That is now official.
I did have a few things I want to remind people about meetings. That tomorrow at 10 o'clock, I believe, is when the fire department is having their ceremony-
Yes, awards.
Their award ceremony. Tomorrow evening at the Morse Pond School, we'll be having the Cape Cod Commission will be holding their next meeting about the Spring Suite-
Marriott Spring Suites.
And that's at, is that six or at seven?
Six.
At six. And then on Thursday, Hayward did announce, but I do want to remind people that we have the senior center review, both at 1:00 and 6:00 on Thursday, 6:30, the police department is having the civilian citizens-
Police Academy.
Police Academy award ceremony that evening.
What night is that? Thursday?
That's on Thursday evening.
At six.
And one piece of correspondence we did receive was just the statement from the Department of Agricultural Resources concerning Eversource, and that they did award the YOP, the Area Operational Plan, to Eversource as Eversource had requested. I don't think in any way responding to our request that they do anything different.
We did receive that letter.
Yeah. At least for the letter we wrote to them, I was a little disappointed that they did not make any changes to it.
I just have one. Sue, is there a meeting at the West Falmouth Library at 11 o'clock on Wednesday?
Not that I'm aware of. There was one last week that Julian and I attended, I probably should have mentioned. The West Falmouth Library was the recipient of a mass cultural grant, which will be of assistance in their capital campaign and preservation and expansion of the building as the heart of West Falmouth Village. So maybe that's what you're referring to.
Maybe that's what it is.
And town manager was also there.
Okay.
I have one more event to add to your menu. There's lots to do in this town, and, and tremendous people doing it all the time. But tomorrow night is also the recognition dinner for the volunteers of public schools, in which 1,000 people at least in this town participate in trying to support the education of our children, and should not go unrecognized. And it's a, it's a very nice evening, and so if you're not doing anything else, no, I think that's by reservation. You should have sent your reservation in by now, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Sazo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple additional items. Along with the events noted, it was my pleasure, it was a pleasure for, for me and Stephanie as well, to attend the 125th anniversary celebration of St. Barnabas Episcopal Church this past Thursday evening, and to deliver the board's congratulatory proclamation. It was an event well-attended, including by the Episcopal Bishop of Massachusetts. And also, I was pleased to attend the Cape Cod Selectmen's meeting on Friday morning in Sandwich, to which Selectman Patterson referred, and Selectman Flynn. And I was pleased to participate in the panel discussion on budgeting in the future, addressing the needs of our towns, and our ability to foot the bill. So it was my honor to be part of that panel discussion. Also, as a reminder, the board's strategic, annual strategic planning retreat will be Saturday, June 20th, at Highfield Hall at 8:00. And we'll have the retreat agenda being issued in the near future. Selectman Jones has mentioned the Betterment Hearing Monday, July 13th. We'll have more notification forthcoming on that, as well as certified notices to the property owners involved, as we have represented. I was also pleased to attend the Day of Portugal celebration on Saturday of the past weekend. I believe Arts Alive is kicking off this weekend as well, here in downtown Falmouth on multiple venues, beginning Friday evening. That's always a heavily attended and very enjoyable event. Part of the weekend will be St. Barnabas Strawberry Festival. Many of us have attended that in the past. That's this Saturday as well. And, Mr. Chairman, a brief update, if I may, on the Child's River, White's Landing situation that has been reported upon, and been a major concern for many residents, we understand. This update, the, through Harbor Master Greg Fraser, I appreciate Greg's vigilance in monitoring this, and he and his Department of Marine and Environmental Services dealing with many complaints and concerns which have been raised. Bottom line, this is a, an improvement, a boat ramp improvement project funded by the state, which we greatly appreciate, designed by the state as well. Unfortunately, some issues have arisen. The Department, Massachusetts Department of Fish and Game, who represents the state in this project, has advised us that they've been in contact with the project design engineer, which is Coastal Engineering Company. They have determined that the benchmark shown on the, their contract drawings is unfortunate, was unfortunately incorrect, and a correction to the benchmark will be made, and the boat ramp area will be resurveyed. Once they complete the survey, they'll develop a new as-built plan. The, the plan will be used for exploring the best option for needed modifications to that heavily-used boat ramp. And we do understand that the modifications may unfortunately not occur before the fall of this year. We are, we appreciate the state doing all that they can to make some adjustments, if that's possible, to make this boat ramp a little bit more usable. Two signs have been posted by, were prepared by the state, have been posted by Marine and Environmental Services, notifying and warning boaters, and cautioning them about launching their boats during low-tide conditions, where the, a major part of the concerns arise. So I want to assure the public and the board that with Greg Fraser, his able assistance, we're continuing to monitor and work with that with the state. And I want to underscore again, we appreciate the partnership of the state in that improvement, and regret that there was a, a problem with design on it, but we will work with the state to see it through to successful closure, to best serve the residents of the town of Falmouth. And that concludes my report. Mr. Chairman.
Any other business from the board?
Second.
A second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Reposed? Two more things to sign.